Welcome to Planning and Zoning Meeting. We have, obviously, a lot to discuss tonight. Before we get going on this, I just want to go over a few ground rules. A lot of you have been around here for multiple meetings, but just in case. Since we have so many things going on tonight, I beg, I beseech, everybody to be brief, okay? I know there will be people who will want to make comments. Please, make your comments, be brief with the comments. If there's something that's already been said, you don't have to reiterate it. It's said for the record. And you can just say, "I agree with so-and-so with those points." It just makes the night go more quickly. We all have day jobs, okay? So that's the first thing. When you make comments, please address the board here and not the applicant. And the other thing is that we ask that you limit comments to three minutes. We'll have other opportunities. A lot of things that we have on the plate tonight will be continued, so there'll be other opportunities to make comments. And, you know, we will, you know, hear these things for the record. They will be in the minutes, so we appreciate that. The last thing is, and you all have been, for all these meetings, worried about this, is, you know, the expectation here of decency and decorum and, you know, treating people decently, even if you're frustrated. So that's very much appreciated. So with that, let's get going with the meeting. And again, we're going to try to move things along as quickly as possible so it's not here till midnight. So with that, Bart, can you read the first thing into the record?
I'm going to read the Town of Newtown Planning and Zoning Regular, Zoning Commission legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Newtown Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing commencing at 7:00 AM on Thursday, September 18th, 2025, Newtown Municipal Center, Council Chambers, 3 Crimrose Street, Newtown, Connecticut, on the following application. Application 25.21 by Celia Builders LLC for a site development plan located at 128 to 130 Mount Pleasant Road and 1 Hollyville Road for the construction of a 67-unit rental development community with 21 units set aside in compliance with Connecticut general statutes 8-30G as demonstrated on a set of plans titled Calendie Apartments. Proposed site development 128 to 130 Mount Pleasant Road, Newtown, Connecticut, dated November 15, 2024, and all supporting documents submitted to the Land use agency dated August 14, 2025. Copies of the above applications and related documents are on file and available for public inspection in the Land use department, Newtown Municipal Center, 3 Crimrose Street, Newtown, Connecticut, dated at Newtown, Connecticut, the 2nd day of September, 2025. Newtown Planning and Zoning Commission, David Rosen, Rosen and Chairman, Barbara Mandel, Secretary. If you plan to attend this meeting and require assistance with hearing devices, contact the Office of the First Electman at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. So this is for publication two times in Newtown B on September 5th, 2025, and September 12th, 2025.
Point of order, will you please tell us who is seated tonight?
So first of all, this is not a situation where we just ask random questions. There'll be time for public participation when we ask for it, but we have the regular commission here.
So additionally, application 25.22 by one... Okay, I'm sorry. Continued application 25.21 by Celia Builders LLC for a site development plan located at 128 to 130 Mount Pleasant Road and 1 Hollyville Road for the construction of a 67-unit rental development community with 21 units set aside in compliance with Connecticut general statutes 830G as demonstrated on a set of plans titled Calendie Apartments. Proposed site development 128 to 130 Mount Pleasant Road, Newtown, Connecticut, dated November 15, 2024, and all supporting documents submitted to the Land use agency dated August 14, 2025.
So I'll now turn it over to the applicant to present. What I understand, you have some new information that you produced.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
We have one mic.
You all working? Good evening. My name is Tim Hollister. I'm a land use attorney with the firm of Amy Allen and Snyder in Hartford, and I'm here representing the applicant, Celia Builders, accompanied tonight by Art Alton Sella, who's a senior contractor, traffic engineer Kermit Hua, architectural designer Joe Allen, professional engineer Mike Mizuko to my left, and our code compliance consultant Joe Persink. So the same group they formed from on September 18th. I want to thank the staff.
We can't hear you.
I want to thank the staff, as always, for their logistical support in getting us prepared for tonight. To recap, we were here on September 18th. We made our initial presentation, approximately an hour. But most importantly, in terms of tonight, we agreed to respond to staff memos that had been received just prior to that hearing and comments and questions that occurred at that hearing. Initially, we promised our response by October 9th, which was last Thursday. We were one day late. Explanations for that. We had quite a lot to do. But we e-filed with Ms. Coyle and Mr. Simley on Friday last week, the electronic version of the package that bears the October 9th date on the front cover, and I'll go through that in just a moment. We then filed hard copies of that package with staff on Tuesday this week, and we further e-filed on Tuesday Mr. Mizuko's revised plan set, one copy which I just distributed to you. So you have the electronic version on file and then a supplementary hard copy tonight. We also filed a, e-filed and hard copy tonight, a written response to the town engineer, Mr. Curtis', comments, which we received before the September 18th hearing. And Mr. Mizuko will go through those. And then we have a, we submitted a revised drainage report. And the second item that I just passed down is just the first three pages, the rest being hydrographs, which are very interesting if you're having trouble sleeping. But that gives you the narrative summary. And of course, the hydrograph and the technical information are now on the e-file if you need it. I will say regarding the overall timing of our response, Mr. Curtis, who I understand is only doing his job, gave us quite a lot, or gave Mr. Mizuko quite a lot to do. So I recognize that we provided the commission with a lot of technical information in the last few days. Therefore, I just want to be clear on the record that if the commission or town staff requires or believes that we should keep the hearing open after tonight, at least to give staff time to review the technical comments, you're willing to grant an extension to do that. So you can make that decision, but however you decide is fine with us. Let me then take a few minutes to review the contents of the October 9th package. The tab one is the cover memo, which has the written narrative responses, and we'll come back to that. Item two is Mr. Mizuko's written responses to the town engineer Curtis' questions. It's a copy of his memo and Mr. Mizuko's responses attached to that. Item three, tab three in the package, is a notice, which I'm sure you've heard about, that the Aquarium Water Company has, quote, "ended the water restrictions" that were imposed during the August 2024 floods. So that potential issue is now put behind us. Tab four, we've given you a copy of the architectural records. A number of slides in it. We did not have colored copies in the package, but Mr. Mizuko reviewed on screen last meeting, so I've given you hard copies of those. Tab number five is an unofficial transcript of the September 18th hearing, and I do want to emphasize, because this recently came up in another town, we use a service called REB.com. This is not an AI-generated transcript, so it's certainly unofficial. But we did check the accuracy against the video, and it's there for whatever use you may want to make of it. And then number six is a revised plan showing the EV parking spaces that were added to the plan. Mr. Mizuko sent a revised plan that was submitted Tuesday, supplemented that. So I think at this point, you actually have two copies of that plan showing the EV responses. So what I'd like to do now is have the members of our team come up, and one by one, we're going to address the items, the narrative responses that are in tab one of our October 9th package. So first, Mr. Hua, then Mr. Mizuko, and then myself, and then Mr. Persink.
Thank you, Tony Hollister. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Kermit Hua, the traffic engineer. Hours ago, three items was mentioned in the public comments. The first one is access on Route 6 and separation distance between the driveway and the Route 6 and Route 25 intersection. The first point I want to make is the consideration of separation distance comes down to limiting driveway-related conflict, right? So most lately are concerned about, especially vehicles emerging from the driveway. In this case, vehicles turning from the driveway to Route 6 and how that interacts with, you know, traffic coming down eastbound on Route 6 and people turning southbound and make a right turn onto Route 25. The main potential conflict in this case is between the exit traffic and the through traffic on Route 6. The way we have designed this driveway and, you know, we, as you know, we mentioned last time, we will designate exit movement to right turn exit. Only in other words, there will be no left turn allowed from the driveway. So that takes away essentially a big potential conflict, conflicting point. And as far as the right way, right turns exit from the driveway is concerned, we have enough more than adequate side distance for these traffic to safely exit driveway. So in this case, the separation distance is really not an issue from a traffic standpoint or from a safety standpoint. The second point I want to make about the separation distances, this, I understand why people recommend, you know, look at this issue. And however, there is no firm guideline against what our proposed configuration. And the third point I want to make is, you know, as you know, previously, this was a restaurant use. And in all likelihood, we are essentially using, improving the previous driveway. In all likelihood, the restaurant generate much more traffic than what the 67 units were generating. The fourth point I want to make is, before we submit to the town, we actually had a formal meeting with Connecticut OT, the agency who maintains Route 6 and the agency who will review our encroachment permit if this application is approved. In other words, we will need Connecticut OT's approval for work within the right of way of Route 6 related to the improvement to the driveway intersection. Actually, it is their recommendation to limit the exit traffic to right turn only. So they already signed up on the configuration and the traffic control at this location. They have no issue, no further issues as far as traffic is concerned. The second point I want to discuss is about using Hillcrest as a second access for this development. As you know, if you have been to the area, currently, we have about 10 houses, plus minus, on Hillcrest Road. There's very little traffic, you know, any time of day, any time of weekday, weekends, because these are the only traffic, these kind of houses are the only houses that generate traffic on Hillcrest Road. We have dead end near the development. After these 67 units are occupied, I actually, before I came here, I looked at the future volumes, two-way volume, including existing traffic and the future traffic. We are looking at 33 vehicles per hour during the weekday morning peak hour and 22 vehicles during the weekday afternoon peak hour. I will provide you a context of the actual traffic capacity of a road like Hillcrest. It is a two-way road, 19 to 20 feet plus minus, you know, in width, adequate for two-way traffic. There's no recorded traffic exit on Hillcrest Road. The actual traffic capacity for such a two-way roadway is 1,200 to 1,400 vehicles per hour. Now, you compare that to 33 and 22 vehicles per hour. We are talking about even during the busiest hours of a week, weekday, the traffic only is running about 1/30th or 1/40th, 1/40th to 1/30th of the roadway capacity. So there really is no traffic capacity issue, no concern, no possibility of traffic congestion on Hillcrest Road. The last point I want to make is there was some discussion about the gas station, a proposed gas station as part of the apartment development in the back, including the church. At the intersection of Covered Bridge Road and Route 25, we actually did include the traffic from those gas station in the background and the build condition of the traffic. So that's all accounted for, you know, traffic study. That's why I have Mr. Chairman.
Before I pass the microphone to Mr. Mizuko, I just want to mention one other thing about, in our package about Houston Hillcrest, there was concern about, I guess, using Covered Bridge Road, Hillcrest, as a cut through to Route 6. And our proposal is that that can be addressed by appropriate signage. But we pointed out that anyone who tried to do that would be crossing private property. It'd be trespassing, not just using a public street as a cut through, but private property. So that would be, that would be easily enforceable with trespass violations, signs, and, you know, if necessary, criminal enforcement. Though I sincerely doubt it would come to that. So Mr. Mizuko.
Good evening. For the record, Mike Mizuko, professional engineer. My office is in Mayberry, representing the applicant. And I will just use the screen to page down the site plan. So we made a few changes, and if you look in this area here, we added, we had nine EV stations for charging, and one of them, which is adjacent to the sidewalk there, is handicap accessible. We also, if you look to the, if you looked on the north side here of the building, we added a retaining wall and a patio area because we realized that there really wasn't much in terms of space for grilling. And so it would be accessed through the basement because it, you really couldn't access it without altering the whole floor plan on the first floor. And you couldn't, because of the four-to-four height difference, you need landings for the stairwell. So we couldn't, we couldn't come out of the landing because we would need headroom for the emergency exit for that end of the building. So we added a sidewalk there that connected into the existing sidewalk and up to the driveway there. We also included an extra light there to provide lighting in that area. And I think that was it. So there is a retaining wall just to make that grade level and also allow for the, that great exit on that end of the building. In terms of site plan, site utilities, site utilities. So the drainage, we went through the review from John Curtis, town engineer, and we basically addressed all the comments. But the big thing that we had to address was accounting for the water quality volume. And it just means holding the water without any release. And what it did was, it basically, we doubled the size of, we doubled the size of the gallery road. So now, instead of just one single road, four by fours, it's a double road, side by side. And the outlets are higher. It just requires more volume to account for that water quality volume. We also went through and addressed all the other comments that he had with regard to the rainfall distribution, the reduction of the two-year storm to 50% of the predeveloped peak flow rate, corrected some of the area so they matched up evenly. And we did additional testing and field verification of infiltration rates. So we felt that we addressed all of that. And in terms of the planting, so we did the lighting plan. Again, it's, there was a question about it being dark sky compliant, and it is. We're keeping the light so it doesn't trespass off the tray. We have it all downlighting, although the picture shows a knuckle. It's just adjustment, but they're all downlighting. It's all 3,000 Kelvin and below. So it meets the, it meets the criteria for the dark sky compliance. And as I said, we did add the one light at the end of the, the north end of the building for that patio area. Okay, the planting plan, so this planting plan was, was something that was given to me by a third party. However, most of the plans that were listed were not native to Connecticut. So we revised, we revised all that, so everything I checked is all native. And we did add, changed these trees to eastern red cedars, and we added a bunch more to just fill in that, those gaps there. But the eastern red cedars get pretty high, so it will, when they do get mature, it'll cover a lot of that facing, that lower-facing elevation view. With regard to, it's shown here. So if you look at the entrance, the original, it's really a wicked skew. So now we're trying to straighten that out a little bit. And what it did was, it was a question about the grade there, and it is steep. So by shifting it up the hill a little bit, we gained, we gained a little bit in elevation. That helps a little bit, but we're also shorting a little bit. So it was probably kind of a wash there. But if you look at the grading, there's a couple of flat spots in the driveways. We have to just kind of keep that all at 50%. But what it did was, we're cutting about two feet in this area just off of the right of way. We're trying to flatten that out before you get to the curb line. There was a question about the purpose coverage. And we were, between parking drives and building, on the existing conditions, looking at roughly 39,700 square feet. And that was on the one lot, although I think the parking was slightly onto the other lot, which is kind of in that area. The proposed coverage for parking drives, building, purpose services is 76,511, which represents about a 92.7% increase. But it's also adding, as I said, those other two lots. And there was a comment by the public about the retaining wall design, but that we wouldn't have the formal designs on the retaining walls at this point. It's just premature. And then there was another comment about drainage. I guess maybe it wasn't clear, but there's a substantial amount of great drainage. And we do have a reduction on this side because originally, all of this parking in the building went down to the drains that's in the existing driveway. Now we have catchbacks in here, so we're picking this, we'll pull this up and a lot of this area here and all of the building. And 90% of the back driveway is all going to be going into that stormwater management system. And we do know it's the same drainage, so we have two connection points, and it'll be sent to them for their review, obviously, and approval. And we also added, currently, right now, at this point, roughly this point, there's a handicap, a sidewalk with a rubble strip, and it goes in maybe, I don't know, five, six feet. So we just connect it with a sidewalk from that point up to the driveway. I think that's... I think that concludes the stuff that I needed to address.
Let me address a few other items from our tab one of the October 9th package. Attached to the tab one memo is a list that I'm sure you're familiar with of the uses that are allowed in the B2 zone, which is the underlying zone of this property. And it was our review conclusion that between site plan, permitted uses, and special permit uses, there are a list of potential other uses that are greater intensity and greater traffic generation, as Mr. Hewitt alluded to, as compared to what is proposed here. Hotel, motel, restaurant, of course, which was the prior use, auto dealerships, warehousing, gas station, and shopping center. So in that, in terms of use intensity and traffic generation, we think we, the proposed residential use is an improvement. There was a question last time about whether we can confirm that this is one building. Yes, it is all, one building only, and we will accept the condition that there would be no modification to that. Last, in terms of my comments, were, there was a comment last time that Newtown is a, and it was criticism of the design of the building, saying that Newtown is a rural community and the proposed building is not a rural-looking building. My responses are, I don't disagree that it's not. It does not speak to the rural setting. But there are multifamily buildings in Newtown. We attached to our tab one memo two photographs as examples. As I mentioned, the underlying zone is B2, which allows uses that are, could be suburban or urban-looking. But more importantly, as I think you know, in 2021, state law was changed to not allow what the legislature calls the character of the town to be used as a criterion in zoning decisions. With this application, because we're agreeing to preserve 30% of the units for moderate-income households, the PCC can only deny if it receives evidence of a substantial public health and safety problem and being concerned about the rural appearance, the non-rural appearance of the building. I don't believe we fall into that category. And also, respectfully, this one building, I don't believe is going to change anything about Newtown, except to add, in our opinion, a nicely-designed building of rental apartment homes, 21 of which will be preserved for households earning between $56,000 and $89,000 annually. So respectfully, I don't think we have to respond to that comment. Mr. Persink is on the list, speaker.
Good evening. My name is Joe Persink, for State Associates, for the record, representing the applicant. There were some questions regarding accessibility movement paths, travel used by... There were some questions regarding accessibility movement, paths of travel used by persons with a, what's called a severe mobility impairment, which is defined by all of the accessibility standards.
Mr. Chase, move on.
Yes. It's been a while since I've been in Night Club, so bear with me. All accessibility standards require what's called an accessible route. And that's a path of travel used by a person with a severe mobility impairment, which is defined as having the ability to move across a floor and reach a set of stairs, but then not having the ability to use the stairs. So everything, there's two aspects to the accessible routes. One, at the site, and the site here is at the top of the hill where the building is and the parking lot, that's the site, that's the site arrival point. So people with mobility impairments have to be able to get from accessible elements, such as accessible parking, accessible EV parking, from those two spots to the building entrance. And then once they're in the building, the building code takes over, the Fair Housing Act takes over for corridors and door lifts, and type A units and type D units, which are different degrees of adaptable accessible units. So everything within the site at the top of the hill, generically, is compliant. Now, there was some discussion about how do I get from the bottom of the hill to the site? Almost all of your, well, all of your accessibility regulations regard whether you look at the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is applicable here, Uniforms for Housing Standard, which is, the Connecticut State Building Code, which is, they all require that there be an accessible route from any public transportation or public sidewalk to the site arrival point, which would be the bottom of the hill and the top of the hill. Now, all of these standards give you an out or exempt you from complying with that walkable route, or a route usable by a person with a mobility impairment. If the only way from the public area, the roadways, transportation sites, stops, and so forth, up to the site arrival point at the top of the hill is by way of a driveway, or what they call a vehicular way. If, if providing that accessible route, a 1 and 12 ramp, an 8% slope, requires massive regrading, then the federal regulations, which are applicable, tell you that it's not required. And the Connecticut State Building Code, although it requires it, allows the state building official to exempt it based on technical difficulties, or what they call technically feasible to comply where the area would require major regrading. So all of the regulations for the, at the state level or at the federal level, would exempt a walkable sidewalk surface from the, from the parking lot area, the upper level, down to the roadway level. Any questions?
And Mr. General Commissioner, that is what we have to present tonight. So I'll go back to where I started if you want to continue to hear it because of, if you give the staff opportunity to review the technical information, we submit it. It's fine with us, but that's our, that's our reason, our supplementary responses from the 18th. Thank you.
Okay, before we open it up to the public, I ask the commissioners if they have any questions of the applicant?
I want to clarify something. For the last year, we had asked about the driveway slowing down and the lowest level of units. And they had patios outside those lower units adjacent to the driveway. And then, is there a sidewalk there along the driveway going to the upper level?
Yes.
Okay. The second thing is, I've noticed that in some of the depictions, there's parking along the driveway, parallel parking.
Correct.
Okay. All right, that clarified my questions. Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions?
Yeah, I have a question about the driveway. It's a left turn only at the bottom of the driveway, so that would be headed west on Route 6.
Right turn.
No, right turn, yeah. Okay, right turn on it, I'm sorry. Okay, what I'd like to know is what you're going to do to prevent people from making a left turn in addition to putting up a few signs that says that? Are you going to put a curb? Are you going to put an island? What are you going to put to prevent that? Because we have several of these in Newtown, and you know, when people don't adhere to the, to the old signs, so some of them have curves and other mechanisms to try to guide people. Some of them are successful, some of them are not. But I'd like to know what's your proposal?
So what I'd like to do for the commissioner questions, let's get them all, and then make it a little less clumsy. Okay, any other questions? So the Hillcrest entrance, you said you're going to put a sign up. But what would you think or feel about a gate with a fog for residents only? Just the follow-up of that is, because you're not going to prevent people coming off of Exit 9, not wanting to wait that long line at the light, not going to come through Hillcrest through the complex and make a right turn. You're just not going to prevent that with a sign.
So I just wanted clarity on the Hillcrest Road, about the dimensions and the legality of a road and two lanes, and understanding that. So is that all roads or rural side roads, state roads? You know, you had a comment about you required X amount of feet across. Hillcrest, to me, is a one and a half lane road, I've driven on it. And to me, it's a one and a half, not a two-lane road, in my perception of it. Now, I certainly didn't go out and measure side to side, but you made statements about the distance, and is that all roads, rural side roads, small cul-de-sacs? Is it all the same for all roads?
All right, I have a couple of, a couple of questions. So you drive up the driveway and, sorry, and the parking's going to be all on the back near where the neighborhood is, on Hillcrest. So what kind of buffering are you going to provide between the development and the neighborhood? And then, as far as the property where it, from Old Hollyville and up Route 6, are you going to put in sidewalks? Sidewalks down there along the property?
On some of our other 830G projects and so forth, the developer has sought the input from our architectural design committee. And I wonder if that had been done, or you plan to do that on this project?
Any other questions or comments before I pass the mic?
All right, let me, let me take the ones that I can respond to. We have not been before the Architectural Review Board. My understanding is it's advisory. The board asked to go, I think we're certainly be willing to go voluntarily on an advisory basis, see if they have suggested improvements. So we'd be happy to do that. There is, the only sidewalk is the one that's shown on the slide there. My understanding is that the grade along Hollyville, along the 25, makes the sidewalk problematic, if not prohibitive, but if... We will, we will look at it. Of course, one of the other issues when you have a request for sidewalks, and Mr. Sibley did ask in one of his comments about a sidewalk, and that was the reason we showed the one that is there. But sidewalk connection is always the issue, because you don't want a sidewalk to know where, or one that leads to a situation where it's not really expected that pedestrians would cross. But I will stay on the record, we're certainly willing to work with the commission and town staff on a sidewalk plan. The question would be the timing and the grade of that sidewalk. Commissioner VanVille asked about buffering. I assume you've been implanted buffering at the intersection of the property with Hillcrest. We would certainly be willing to look at it. I'm sorry, did I misunderstand your question?
I think that planting's like some kind of a wall or something to really separate the development line from the neighborhood.
We haven't looked at that. I'm not sure I understand why that would be necessary for apartment buildings.
Well, you stand up at the parking lot, and you can see that Hillcrest neighborhood.
All right, would the concern be the headlight layer or something else?
Development.
We can't, guys, we can't have back and forth. This is a new year and a new beginning.
We have not looked at that, we'd be happy to look at that, whether it's planting or some kind of low fence. I happen to know more about sound attenuation fences than you would dare to know, but a sound attenuation fence would have to be 12 or 14 feet high to have any effect. And in my experience, apartments generally are not noisy, especially on the backside, because that would be, the apartment building is going to be a sort of a sound buffer from, from the Route 6 side, if you think about it that way. Now, let me go back to the other questions. How do we enforce the Hillcrest cut through? First of all, there, we can't, I think you know, commissions cannot assume a traffic violation. You have to assure people that if you put up a sign, whether it's a fire lane or something else, that people are going to comply. And this would not just be, you know, no passer, this would be, if you crossed this line, you were trespassing on private property, and you'll be subject to fine and prosecution. I mean, there are signs, and then there are signs when a time comes to deter people from crossing private property. It's also, you know, quite problematic, someone, it's not an easy cut through, even if they tried to do it. You look at the geometry of Hillcrest, they have to turn right, then they have to turn left, and they have to go down the hill. But the signage will be effective, because it is, again, it's not just a traffic management, it's a property break. And in my experience, that is, that is sufficient. If the commission or staff has a further recommendation, by all means, we're all ears on that, but I don't, properly signed and properly enforced, there really should not be any issue with the cut through. I understand drivers are patient, they're always a patient, but to cut through from Coverbridge to Hillcrest through private property to Route 6, so they can turn right, is not going to, I don't think it's going to happen. Now, Mr. Hewitt, you want to respond to Commissioner Whitman?
Yes, the first question about the roadway width. I measured approximately 19 and a half, 19 feet plus minus the total width of the pavement. So just give you a context. The highway, you know, the interstate we drive on, the length width is typical, standard is 12 feet per lane. And Connecticut DOT, they now use 11-foot lanes on state roads, even in one and so forth. So 19 divided by 2 is 9 and 1/2, in words, it's a little bit narrower what DOT use on their state road. And also, another context, the typical width of a passenger car is 6 and 1/2 feet. So theoretically, you know, you should not have a problem, have two passenger cars pass by a 19-foot wide roadway pavement. Now, here, we have another factor is that the slope of the roadway, so it gives people a sense, you know, but it is my opinion that, you know, people tend to drive slowly on this anyway. So I don't think 19 feet of the total pavement width is a problem for standard passenger cars. Now, if you talk about larger vehicles, say tractor trailers or, you know, fire trucks, my understanding, they are probably the width of about 1 and 1/2 plus minus. So if you introduce the curve, you introduce the slope, probably, I would say difficult for them to pass by on the roadway. But for day-to-day traffic, I don't see that as an issue, right? What is the other traffic question? Oh, yeah, yeah, gentrick. I would let Michael have, you know, my, the way I think about, yeah, I think it's a good idea to add some Q, if you will, some pavement, different texture, different color, at least, you know, remind people you are supposed to turn right only. But one thing I want to make sure is the curve or whatever you're proposing, they are either flush with a pavement or mountable. Because if you have a typical curve and then not mountable, or people are going to lose control of it, that's at least not good for the fire truck to actually, because the fire truck is much larger, that even if your passenger cars can enter, no problem, then fire truck have to climb the curve, I think that's a problem. You know, and the way I think about it, I think commission definitely can add a condition, you know, if, if sees appropriate, you know, as part of, as part of the approval, you know, have some kind of a physical feature or payment feature or payment texture to remind driver they can only make right turns to exit driveway. But, and anything we are proposing, make sure it's mountable.
I think we addressed all the questions. I will, now that we've responded, I will say that if you'd like it... Mr. Chairman, if you'd like us to come back next time with addressing these details, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be subject to vote by the commissioner, but my intention is that would be the direction we go. Thank you. I think we have one more question. You're good?
Okay, now, we'd like to open it up for public comment, a few things. Again, you're going to need to talk directly into the microphone, and hear or not hear the difference, and people do not do so. So, you know, we may remind people, because we all have a tendency to forget. You need to state your name and address for the record. Sign in, please, so the right statements are attributed to you. And at some point, because we have so many applications tonight, we're going to need to cut off discussions, since this is likely to be continued, and there will be other time to provide comment. Again, everything is heard and part of the record, so please don't repeat comments that are already stated. And one other thing, just as a reminder as well, is, you know, we're aware, you know, of traffic concerns. That's not grounds for denial of an 830G. What's grounds is substantial health and safety risk, as the applicant stated. So, you know, as you're, as you're making your comments, whether the architecture is what it is, it is advisory. We don't have the power to do anything about it, and the traffic as well, we don't have the power to do anything about it. It's health and safety risk, maybe associated with traffic, maybe not. But anyway, the other last thing is, we apologize about the clumsiness of having one mic, but we're going to get comments, and we may, may not be able to address each one individually with a back and forth, because we don't have the mic. But with that, let's start out for public comments right now, and I will pass the mic to whoever wants it. I think we have one more right here, like to speak. I think we have one more right here would like to speak.
Would it be easier to stand over there with the mic?
You can stand in the front. Yeah, that was easier.
My name is Juliette England. I am at 1224 Brookside Court, Newtown. I have two issues, one is safety, one is health and safety. I'll go safety first. According to the Newtown Volunteer Ambulance Association, in the year ending September 2025, they responded to more than 3,200 calls, that's 8.76 or 8.67, rounded up to nine a day. This is a volunteer organization. They are housed in a facility that's over 12 years old and needs replacement parts, and they are out on a fundraising drive right now. By adding additional residents to the town at this point in time, we are working with a stretched and possibly stressed emergency response system. Health and safety. As a result of the August 2024 flood, Aquarian wells were taken offline. Safety with sufficient water pressure to fight fires should be a consideration. Water is required for drinking, cooking, hygiene, sanitation. Aquarian has posted in the Newtown Bee, and when they put their twice-weekly restriction in place, please note that the interconnection through Fairfield Hills is intended for emergency use only and not a permanent solution to the water supply issue. We don't have a stable, healthy water system at this time in order to handle additional construction of multifamily.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sam Grumman. I actually live at 9 Coverbridge Road, three, three months ago, here in Newtown. I'm an army veteran and Newtown resident. I have three kids in our school, and I call Newtown home. I'm here because the people most affected by your decision, they can't be here tonight. They're working second shifts today after their hospital. They're at home with the kids. They don't have the luxury to take time off to come here. They're the nurses, teachers, and police officers who make Newtown run. They're the customers keeping My Place Restaurant and Station 25 in business, and they're being priced out. I would like you to understand that for every delay and every denial, the people I just described, they're the ones to pay the price. Not the developer, they're just going to pass across the law. That bill lands on renters, on buyers competing for scarce housing, and on existing residents through higher property taxes, which we've all experienced. And guess what? I'm all three. Let me give you a number, since 2023, you've seen organized opposition successfully oppose roughly 300 to 400 housing units here in Newtown. That represents $2 to $4 million of lost annual property tax revenue. Probably, you know, and that's real money, money that could fund our schools without the tax hikes we've experienced. Meanwhile, our legal budget is $60,000 of projections defending these denials. Ask Fairfield how that's going for them. That's the bill for obstruction. It's taxpayers like you and me. So you may hear calls tonight for more third-party studies. You may sound reasonable, they may sound reasonable, until you realize that delay is just another form of denial. And these costs, the legal fees, the extended timelines, the additional studies, the holding cost, all these costs get passed along to the rest of us. Now, some concerns are legitimate, you've heard them, and they should become conditions of approval. Talked about lighting standards, drainage specifications, health and safety reviews. Yes, that's how BNC should work, and I commend you all for doing that job. I really appreciate it. But you know as well as I the difference between that and obstruction. When someone asks for conditions that can be written and enforced, it's legitimate. But endless studies and what-ifs, obstruction. You reviewed the applications, and you'll continue to review them, you'll, you'll hear public testimony. I think you have the information, the intent identified legitimate concerns that should become conditions of approval. So for projects that meet the standard, close the hearings, schedule the votes, make decisions. That is what leadership looks like. Make democracy work for all of us, not just a few of us. Thank you.
Just make sure you sign in as well.
Hi, Janet McEwen, 10 Hillcrest Drive. I want to speak to the safety of the families and children that live on Hillcrest and at the Coverbridge Apartments, and to the increased safety risk of if Hillcrest is opened up to the rear of the apartments. There are six houses on Hillcrest. Three have children, one is a preschooler, and the rest are school age, like elementary and grade school age children. There are many children living at the Coverbridge Apartments now. School buses make multiple trips in and out of this road daily. The bus stop is at the intersection of where Coverbridge meets the driveway to the apartments. And the way the road lines up, it requires the bus driver to pull in, turn a little, stop, let the kids on or off, and then they pull forward and back up toward the church, and they have to turn left, back out onto Coverbridge, go out to 25. Older kids have to wait out at the corner of Coverbridge and Route 25. This scenario is already dangerous. I witness drivers speeding past a bus that's trying to back up to turn around so they can get back into the apartments. They add to this the increased volume of cars from the apartments either turning left from Coverbridge to get onto 84, or people returning and going uphill crest to enter those apartments from the back to avoid the weight of the light. I'm aware it was said tonight that that isn't going to happen, people won't do that, put up a sign. There is a sign now that says it's, there's no outlet. When that road backs up, I see it all the time. People will use Coverbridge and Hillcrest, they think they can get through there now. They're going to beat everybody to the light, and they can fly up that road, and then they realize they can, and they can fly and back down. So I'm just requesting, I don't know if the board can have a third-party traffic assessment done, given the amount of traffic that backs up almost daily on 25 and Route 6. My neighbor Ed Adams was unable to attend because he's traveling, but he did send a letter to Land Use, part of it which stated about the width of the road. He did measure it, it's 19 feet, and the federal standard, the DOT recommends each lane is 11 feet, and so the road should be 22 feet wide. And I realize a foot and a half or so doesn't sound like a lot, but when people are driving large SUVs, which so many people do, it is a lot. It's difficult to get two regular cars pass each other on our road. It was also said, yeah, that it's not going to be an easy cut through. It's not easy. And I don't understand the comment from the traffic guy that our road could handle 1,200, I thought he said, 1,200 vehicles. That's insane. So I'm just going to say, these are like country roads here, to quote John Denver, Hillcrest and Cover, they're used for recreational walking areas right now because Route 25 is not good. People that live in the apartments walk on them all the time, people that I know do. And if health and safety are the primary markers for declining this project, then it should be obvious that it should not be approved and Hillcrest should not be opened up. Thank you.
Hi, Vern Beddett, 1 Hillcrest Drive, this is the only house on the left. I personally feel that the road is too narrow. I've lived there 40 years, and I don't think I've ever met a car going the other way. Because of the narrowness of the road, we don't even get a full-size plow. We get a truck, pickup truck sometimes, and a lot of the times, the plow has to go backwards up the hill and use the sand to get up that hill. Just past my house, vision is impaired from my driveway for traffic coming down the hill. Our road is always in disrepair since they put in the sewers. I don't even know how many years that is, but it's a wreck. The other thing too is, the homes on Hillcrest, new apartments, everybody going left, the 200-plus apartments that are already there, the church, and now a gas station access on Coverbridge, all of those apartments and everything in business has one exit out of that area onto 25. Coverbridge, well, that's it. That's dangerous. So I too would like to see an independent traffic safety study of the whole thing, if that's possible. Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Michael Copley, and I'm a resident in 4 Hillcrest Drive. I'm here to respectfully present a petition against the proposed OK at the top of our road as a cut through to support the development of new apartments in our neighborhood. Our road is simply not built to handle increased traffic. It's narrow, often overgrown with brush and has no sidewalks, making it unsafe for both drivers and pedestrians. Many of us walk regularly, and the lack of pedestrian infrastructure already poses risks. Adding more traffic would make walking nearly impossible and dangerous. I already see cars trying to cut through our road before realizing it's a dead end and have to turn around back down the hill. We're already anticipating a significant increase in traffic due to the new gas station being built to exit under Coverbridge. On many days, it's already difficult to get in and out of our road. When the highway backs up, which often does, drivers divert down Route 25, and our road becomes blocked. Some mornings, I sit at the end of the road just trying to plow out to get to school and work, more traffic from the apartments and cut through would make the situation even worse. My husband is a volunteer firefighter for Hollyville, and in the afternoon, he finds it difficult to get out of our road to respond to emergency calls. This isn't just inconvenient, it's a public safety issue. Additionally, our road suffers from infrastructure issues like sinkholes. It's not equipped to handle the way a terrible increase vehicle flow. Opening up will not only comprise compromise safety, but also accelerate deterioration. In the winter, our road becomes even more hazardous. There's often plows, a single lane only, which severely limits access, increases the risk of collisions. The plow consistently misses my driveway by 45 feet during each storm, forcing us to be shoveling out of the road to clear in front of our driveway. This is not just frustrating, it's dangerous, especially when you consider this deep hill and the potential for more traffic to be routed down. We understand the need for development, but it must be done responsibly and with consideration for existing facilities. So I urge you to reconsider this proposal and explore alternatives that won't jeopardize the safety, accessibility, and character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Hello, so Michael Wargarty, I live on Whopper Will Hill. It's, it's quite a distance up the hill, it's exactly a tenth of a mile from this intersection. But I traveled this road for 15 years and getting off, and my, my concern is even the traffic that's heading up the hill from Bethel, there's only a single lane there, and everybody uses the breakdown lane to get around. So that whole intersection, when they were trying to do the truck warehouse, was, was rated as an F, a failure, that intersection. Now, that was done by an unbiased traffic study that came up with that rating. And the town knows that it's failed, excuse the state, but they still keep entertaining, you know, mass development right in the bottleneck down there. You know, I know they said the state, somebody from the state said that, you know, that was okay to, you know, it was plenty adequate, but it doesn't. I mean, you sit there, go on a Thursday evening or Friday, and you'll see that people can't get up, get around the area. And also, I know you're well aware that the next presentation is for the athletic fields, and that's five tenths of a mile up the hill, so you add that on top of that down the bottom of the hill, I don't know how deep it developed, within a half a mile, you're going to develop all this additional traffic that they still refuse to do any improvements on the road. And that's up to the state, and we see how long it took for the men to do improvements down at the high school. I was here for 30 years before, a couple of years ago, they finally widened that out. So I don't think we need to wait that long. And that's it.
Excuse me? He's got a comment.
Excuse me, you have to sign in.
Sign in.
Yeah. Okay, now, at this point, five more speakers, please, we have a very long night ahead of us. So this is the first of five. Just a reminder as well that while we appreciate the comments about traffic, traffic in the absence of something regarding safety or health is not under consideration here.
Dave Ackert, 6 Sider Mo Road, good evening, thanks for having me. I want to advocate for the safety of the 10 homeowners on Hillcrest. I, we all have experienced what happens there when the Roche and Mo Bridge has a traffic backup and people start getting off big at night. So I'm going to make it quick. I, I know there's talk about continuing this hearing already because of other reasons. I'm going to plead with the commission to please vote tonight to hold, to conduct a third-party traffic study. And this is not, for point for clarification, a delay, this is not obstruction. It is in your regulations that you can ask for a third-party traffic study paid for by the applicant using a third-party expert of the commission's choosing. So I would ask you to do that without further delay tonight. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brayden Wilson, out of that 12 Hillcrest Drive. It's right on the other side of that, we're on the, where Hillcrest meets this property. We've had a lot of damage done to our property because of the road and because of the condos that are already on the road. We've had semis as well, we've had lots of damage to our property. And just going by when there was a restaurant in the property, we've had many people wander onto our yard and into our house, so I definitely agree with the buffer. We definitely need a fence of some sort. Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? The back?
Hello. Sorry.
Yep, there you go.
I'm not good with this. My name's Lynn DeNo, so I live at 2 Coverbridge Road, and I just want to bring up a safety issue here. There's so many of them, where do I start? So since we had the church put in and the apartments put in, we have lots more pedestrians on the road. There are people who walk there all hours of the night, all night long. It's a very dark and dangerous road. People pull in there, they don't see the no outlet sign, like where semis pull in, they can't get out, they don't know where to go, they start going uphill crest, they realize they can't turn around. So they either end up backing up into their yard or backing down the hill, which is seriously dangerous. I have to say, the traffic now is crazy, and I know the traffic isn't an issue, but it is an issue because it's a safety issue. Like Janet McEwen was saying, kids get on school buses there, people walk there. That road has a very, if you've ever been uphill crest, it's a dead, it's a dead-end road with a very sharp line corner. And I've gone up there, I've lived in my house since 1990, so I've been up there So I've been up there several times, my neighbors or my friends. So I've been up there. I don't even like to drive to Janet's house. I'd rather walk. That's the truth. It's a terrible blind corner and it's dangerous. And if somebody's walking, you're not going to see them. And all those kids that do live up there are gonna have to walk down to the school bus. The other thing to remember is, is if you're gonna have people coming out onto the road and they're only gonna be able to make a right turn, then if they need to go the other way to get on the highway, guess which way they're going. So if you really think that you're not gonna get that much traffic down there, you are. And when the highway backs up, nobody sees the no outlet sign. So I live right there on the corner and I see it all day, every day. People pull in. They don't know where to go. They don't know what to do. They pull in my driveway and try to turn around. They go on my lawn. They go on my neighbor's lawn. It's ridiculous and it's dangerous. Like I said, so many people walking. It's just something that you really have to think about. I can't believe that we would think about doing this after we just had a huge apartment, a church, right there, increasing that even more on a small little road, make it more dangerous than it already is. Because I've already been almost hit at least a dozen times since the apartment came. Because people just speed in and out, in and out. And I'm coming in and making that left. My house is the first one on the left, that red house. But it's crazy. It is insane. And I see it more now because I don't work as much as I used to. Now I really see it. I see these semis and stuff and it's very dangerous. So I think seriously, this needs some real consideration. Thank you.
Hi. Door Ranger Marky of 19 Town Road. I don't feel that sufficient consideration has been taken regarding the problem. It's a subregion based in the polygon. It's right across the street. I contacted Connecticut D to investigate and report regarding being so close to the Palm Brook that has wild trout. I don't believe there's storm protection to this vulnerable area. I would appreciate it if you could continue this meeting so that D can do their review on the complaint and report on this area for environmental protection. Thank you.
I say that we appreciate, first of all, and I'll get a mic as well, but I tend to be pretty loud. Thank you for the constructive public comments. Traditionally, we've allowed the applicant to respond. Last time, the applicant waited until the next meeting to respond. Would you be willing to do that in the interest of time today as we would continue the public hearing? Okay. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion from the commissioners to continue the public hearing. Rob, would that be in this location at 7:00 PM November 6? 6, okay. So November 6, 7:00 PM, this location. And I'd like to entertain a motion now?
So.
We have a second. All of us in favor of continuing the public hearing? Aye. Okay. See you then. Thank you. Now, if there are any people that are going to be leaving at this point, please do so quickly. We gotta continue right through our agenda. We ask that you not create a promotion in talking here. You just talk, alcohol. Thank you. With that, Barr's gonna read. Oh, okay. Just read the next one into the record.
All right. So legal notice for application 25.22 by 188 to 190 Mount Pleasant Road, LLC for a text amendment to the zoning regulations of the town of Newtown to create a zoning district to modify the affordable housing language by adding section 9.1 to 9.12 to the text amendment for affordable housing through developing in greater density as demonstrated by supporting documents submitted to the Land use agency August 27, 2025. Application 25.23 by 188 to 190 Mount Pleasant Road, LLC for a zone change for a property located at 188 to 190 Mount Pleasant Road so as to rezone the property from a BPO to the proposed Mount Pleasant Development District as demonstrated on a set of plans titled 188 and 190 Mount Pleasant Road, Newtown, Connecticut, dated May 1, 2025, and also three documents submitted to the Land Use Agency dated received August 27, 2025.
So now I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. This is a doubleheader here today. I'm 830G. I have my exhibits I just wanted to hand in. I've already uploaded them to Oklahoma. One of them is the original affidavit that I was holding. What I handed in. So my name is Steven Bellis. I'm with the Pellerina Law Firm and I represent the applicant 188-190 Mount Pleasant, LLC. So that entity has a, is a contract purchaser of 188, 190 Mount Pleasant Road that is currently owned by RestCom Investments, LLC. I've given you exhibit two, a portion of the contract, so you know what our situation is. Let me give you a little background for the record about 830Gs. As many of you all know or have read, there's been several reports that Connecticut is experiencing a housing crisis. There was a report that was given just to the legislature this year that cited some statistics to back it up. So according to testimony that was given to the legislature, there's a study done by ECO Northwest that said that Connecticut has the most restrained housing supply in the nation, only 7% vacancy rate. It says that the state needs 110,000 more units to meet the need. Another study done by the Connecticut Business Institute, which is kind of a conservative entity, said that there's 70,000 positions that need to be filled statewide and that the lack of housing inventory and affordability is making companies leave Connecticut. They've decided, some companies have told the Connecticut Business Institute that they're not gonna move their headquarters here because there's not enough housing for their employees. So in the legislature, as you all know, passed 830G in 1990 and the case law's clear that the affordable housing, if an application meets the criteria, 830G, our Supreme Court just last year said that these applications are in the best interest of the community insofar as such development provides fair access to housing and expands housing opportunities for the citizens of this state. That's a quote from the Supreme Court in Connecticut. The standard that you must use, I think you all know it, but I'll just highlight it again, is that any appeal from the zoning commission that burden shifts and it's on the commission to prove and demonstrate based on the evidence of the record that the decision to deny was necessary to protect substantial public health, uh, public interest in health, safety, or other matters which they could consider, that those public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing and such public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the affordable housing development. In this case, Newtown is not exempt. The state gives a list of towns that are exempt. You have to be a 10, you have to have 10% affordable units in your town to be exempt. According to my research, Newtown's at approximately 2.88%. So clearly not, not an exempt property. What am I here for tonight? I'm here for a zone change and text amendment. That's why I'm here, under 830G. 830G, particularly section B and C of the statute allows a zone change if the town end a text amendment without a final site plan, right? If the town requires a conceptual site plan, then you have to describe the total number of units, how they're arranged on the property, the traffic circulations, and talk about sewer and water supply. So that's the kind of application that I'm here for you tonight with. So the regulation, I put up some under one of the exhibits that I handed in. Some of the criteria, the state statute allows for conceptual site plans. The regulation allows for it. And they say these kind of plans don't have to be as detailed to require the information that would normally be required in connection with a final site plan. Because if I gave you a final site plan and you approved it, then theoretically, we can go get a building permit. So these are not that detailed. Our appellate court in Eureka versus Ridgefield has recognized that you can do a zone change and text amendment with conceptual site plans. As an anecdote, I just did the same procedure in Fairfield about two weeks ago, 1477 Congress Street. Fairfield Zoning Commission approved a conceptual, approved a text amendment and zone change without the final site plans. I think about a month ago, I did it in Stratford, under 2152 Bardem Avenue. Same thing, they approved the conceptual site plans and text and zone change. So what does that really mean? That means that I have to come back to this commission. If you were to approve this application and you did grant a zone change or a text amendment, I would certainly have to come back before this group and I would have to give you a detailed final site plan, which you would get to review like you would do any site plan. So even though you may grant the text amendment and zone change, that's not the final, that's not the final thing. I have to come back. So in this case, I am proposing the zone change and text amendment for two parcels. The parcels are 188 and 190 Mount Pleasant. And I'm proposing it to be the Mount Pleasant Development District. It is being submitted under 8-30G, but as I said, I have to come back if you approve it or approve it. So I'm only gonna be giving you general overview of everything tonight. So this text amendment that I propose permits 300 residential units with 1.75 parking spaces per residential unit. The conceptual site plan shows three buildings with three phases. Phase one has a building with 68 units, phase two has a building with 88 units, and phase three has a building made 144 units. Jason Edwards will go over the site plan with you in a little more detail, but I'm just giving you the highlights. So this particular site plan, if you look it up on the screen, you'll see that there's wetlands on the property and they have been flagged. And what I'd be my flag is that they've been marked and the surveyor has put them onto the map for you. Then you'll see a little, and they're on the left-hand side here, if you're looking at this. Then you'll see a line, and yep, there's the line. And then that red thing that goes around it, that's called an upland review area. So in this town, and a lot of towns, the wetlands commission is allowed to look at any activity either that's gonna affect anything with those wetlands, which are marked by the flags, but they also have jurisdiction to look at if there's any impact on that upland review area. Okay, so yeah, there we go. The numbers are the flags. So if you see like a WF23, 34, those are the flags. So the wetlands is everything inside those flags. The outside of the wetlands is just the upland review. Just looking at the site plan, you can see clearly that no activity is being proposed, either touching those wetlands or in the upland review area. But not, even so, even with me saying that, it's still prudent for my client to go to wetlands and show them this plan. So that's what we plan on doing. And then when we go to wetlands and get their blessing, we'll come back to you all and say, okay, wetlands felt that we should do this or that, or wetlands had no concerns and we can proceed with our final site plan. So I can promise you that we'll be going, we'll be submitting our wetland application very shortly. I can tell you that in March of 2025, we submitted a WTCA application. And that one's exhibit four. And then I spoke with the director, Fred Hurley, and he said to me that there were no capacity issues, that the town had planned on developing in this area. And I'll have Jason speak a little bit as I'll be talking about sewer capacity for this particular site. But apparently, the town had foresight to have sewers in this particular part of Mount Pleasant Road. We have also submitted a traffic study. That's in exhibit number six. It's rather lengthy. I'm just gonna tell you that the traffic study was done by KWH Enterprise. They've estimated that there will be 111 vehicle trips in the mornings and 117 vehicle trips in the afternoon. And the conclusion of the report was that it will not pose any health or safety risks. In addition, the site line distances were determined and they were determined to be adequate for the driveway that we're proposing. Kermit Hewitt is the principal of KWH and he's here and he'll explain his findings in exhibit six. Jason Edwards is the gentleman helping me with the computer screen. He's with Jason Edwards Associates and he's going to talk to you a little bit about the adequate sewer capacity and water service. He's done a report that's on exhibit five that does an analysis that we wanna make sure that the up pipe can handle the 300 units. So he'll also talk to you about the site plan. So what am I talking about as far as an 830G application? Well, in this particular case, there's two things we could have done. We could have do, we can do a set aside development or you could do something that has state assistance for the rental units. What we chose and what my client chose was called a set aside development. So what that really means is that there will be 90 units, not even 300, that are set aside for people that qualify for affordability in your town. And what that means is they have to make 80% of statewide or area median income, whatever is less, or 60% of the area median income or statewide median income or less. So just to give you an example, the statewide median income for Connecticut is 125,000. So if someone were making 80% of that, anyone good at math? Ballpark, 100?
What is it? 80% of what?
125,000. 90,000? Yeah, that sounds about right. So if someone were making $90,000 and that's proven by looking at their tax returns, they could apply for one of these units, the 90 units I'm talking about. If someone, and so 15% of the 90 units will be set aside for the people that have the 80% AMI or state, or state income. The, the next group would be the 60%ers. So I don't know, what's 60% of 125,000? Yeah, about 75.
68% of what?
Of 125,000? Ballpark, 75,000, 70,000? Ballpark seventy-five thousand, seventy. Yeah, so if someone were making seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars, they could apply to those units. Now, if you looked at these units, there are absolutely no difference uh, in the quality, the construction or anything or the outside. They're just inside the apartment building. They're not put in one section, they're scattered throughout the whole building. They're scattered throughout all three of these buildings. And you would never know who was living in an affordable unit or who was living in a market rate unit. So the only difference would be that the administrator would have to determine whether the person was qualified or not. Uh, I named Mark Nolan as the administrator. Uh, he's been recognized by several nearby towns to be a qualified administrator. I know that Fairfield uh, has recognized him, Stratford, Shelton. I think he does work up in maybe East Line. Not sure all the towns, but he's someone that is familiar with eight thirty G and he would be the person that would have to administer that if these people qualify and more importantly, that the rent is reduced. There's a calculator um, that one, that the developer has to use that the state gives us. And it says if you're going to charge uh, these people uh, the affordable rate, uh, you put in the number and they'll say the maximum rent you can charge this particular person is X, Y, Z. And it's less than the market rate. So these units will be de-restricted for forty years. Why do you guys care about that? Because it goes towards your uh, moratorium. It goes towards your ten percent affordable. Um, so let me tell you a little bit about the um, the buildings themselves. Um, and then I'll have Jason Edwards speak and I'll have Kermit speak. So maybe you could put up exhibit seven. Uh, okay, so, or, the rendering right now. I'm gonna first, let me give you a rendering first. Okay, so this is what, uh, this is again, this conceptual uh, rendering of what the project would look like as it was built out. Um, as you can see, I've, I've got the three buildings that I talked to you about. Um, each one of those buildings has a different number of units in it. Um, and uh, inside these units have amenities like gyms and whatnot. Uh, there's a pool as you can see, uh, and a little clubhouse next to the pool kind of in the middle of the project. There's parking um, both uh, underneath the project and some uh, additional parking outside. Um, yeah, okay. You can see that it's a podium building. What I mean by that is that um, you see like they look like stilts. Um, so that allows the parking underneath the building. As, as well as the parking on the outside. So that's what, that's a conceptual rendering of the um, of, of the architecture of the building. When I come back with the, with the final site plan, uh, the architect will come and testify in a role or in detail of the features of the actual building. Um, uh, the different, whether it's the fire code, building code, it all was. We're not going to discuss any of that now. You probably heard that for the last application, but my application is not the same as that last application. So I'm not going to get into all those. I did want to let you know what, what, what we're proposing so when we come back you have an idea of what it is. Um, as far as the um, I'm not going to uh, take you through all the features of the building itself, but um, it, it, it's pretty much laid out as one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Um, it's on exhibit seven, I don't know, Jason. Yeah, exhibit seven, yeah, that's a typical floor plan. Um, on this particular floor, it had one, you know, two bedrooms and one bedroom, so kind of in a, in a mix. Uh, seven. Yeah, that's, that's a traffic study, so we won't get it. Well, that, that's all right. As I said, the next time we're going to go into the uh, I can go a little bit more into the buildings. So right now, why don't I just turn it over to Jason? Uh, he's, he's the um, uh, site plan. He's going to talk a little bit about the site plan. He's going to talk a little bit about the sewer and water and um, a little bit about the storm drainage. But again, these are not final site plans, so you're not going to get the kind of detail that you're going to get later. So let me let him go.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Jason Edwards, the principal of Isaiah and Associates, engineers and surveyors located at two twenty-seven Stephanie Miller Eastons. Um, as Mr. Bellis wanted to, uh, to detail on, on the development already, I think I just stressed that this is a conceptual plan, not a finished product. But we did try and prove out any of the um, the major points as far as stormwater, sewage, sightlines, anything that would be traffic or health and safety related, uh, we tried to be certain that we could accommodate those or make our plan control requirements. Uh, just to give a little bit of a, a broad view of where we are, this is the project here, it is right on the Bethel Newtown line, uh, right next to again this Hollandia Nursery over here, this is uh, the main one. Uh, and that's all Bethel, but uh, then in uh, we, in the rear of our project is the um, Liberty, yeah, Liberty Newtown. And this is the Maplewood and, I started those, some woods or something. Uh, woods, yeah. So, so we do have some other, um, you know, multifamily developments that sort of plus. Uh, and then if you continue down, uh, you've got the covered bridge apartments that are down here. Uh, not too far away, this is about a mile from here down to where the pump station is. Uh, this pump station is, was uh, built for, really for this purpose, to do redevelopment of this corridor, or call, um, you know, they, they installed a pump station here that then pumps all of this waste back up into Bethel uh, and back to Denver, as we can play. Uh, so we would be connecting to a gravity main that runs down to the pump station and then it gets pumped back out. Uh, there's not a lot on that main now, uh, in size, but I think it's an eight-inch line. I do have a report that was submitted that just talks about what the capacity of that line is and we're less than, you know, ten percent of capacity that we could propose in here. Um, and I did conversations with uh, the WTCA, uh, yeah, Fred Hurley, I don't know what his title is, but.
Director.
Okay. Um, you know, he seemed to indicate that there was not a capacity issue here. Um, so we'll have to obviously go back to them, uh, as we before, but uh, there's nothing to trigger any alarm in that regard there. Um, A four is obviously there also, you have A four here. There's an A four also at another, just off the screen here that um, connects it over to Bethel by target. This is just the existing condition survey. As Steve mentioned, there is uh, wetlands, um, two locations on the property, uh, that sort of straddle the sidelines or, or are pugging the sidelines that are corridor hustlers in the middle, uh, where we're, we're trying to, we're trying to follow. Um, sight drains in multiple directions, because you've got drains that go down the back and then this way, and then also the sections that come out of the front. Um, and also get into this, the wetlands, you know. There's two, there's an existing, um, dilapidated homes on here. Uh, I don't know if they're getting selected quite at this point. Um, they may have tenants in them, but uh, they were not well maintained. We do have a couple access points here that exist now, very steep driveways. Uh, this is a steep section right here, it's um, essentially a, almost a rock facing here. Um, so it's a part of the development. That, that knob of, um, the hill there will be brought down to improve the sightlines on this corner. Uh, because it's, right now they are not great, but uh, as the driveway is disrupted, you have this whole side to be cleared out. You have a, a relatively gradual slope coming up. It wouldn't allow you to have sightlines down around the corner as well as well down road that way. Um, as also Steve mentioned, it's both three buildings. Uh, we did prove out the sizing of stormwater retention on this. So that's the big, uh, checkerboard looking things here. Uh, these are retention galleries, they have underground structures, um, with multiple outlets, variety of spots here to try and maintain the existing uh, flowback. Uh, I'll observe my pumping water uh, and sewer. My understanding is aquarium is usually agreement with the proofing of the land company to re, um, uh, I guess reactivate the connection to that, prepare for those water system. Who didn't allow for new connections, so we don't see any problem with the, um, water connection here. Um, we do have a clubhouse.
We can't hear you, man, because I can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk into the microphone, I'll try. Um, so this is just a breakdown of the, the building, um, zoning requirements that we're proposing. Uh, we have three buildings, a total of three other apartments. One bedroom's a hundred twenty-four, two bedroom's a hundred eighty-four. Uh, you have a, a one point eight uh, per unit apartment ratio, so eight hundred and eighty-six spaces. This would need to go to USTA, um, which is the state traffic commission essentially for uh, you know, a final approval. Um, it's going to be broken down by phases and buildings here. It's on the line as well. Uh, this is a, just a sightline analysis sketch that I built as a board for show. Again, this is, shows how we'd be cutting the corner here to lower the grade to, to be able to see around that corner. And it will improve the sightline of that whole area right now. You know, this is a, an area where people are moving pretty fast and you can't see around that corner. Um, so in my opinion, it'll be a benefit, uh, in. Uh, I'm sorry, we, we approximately at our feet in each direction, we'll be able to see once we make that change. Now that's all within the DOT right of way, uh, in front of our property, so we would be permitted to cut that down. Um, it would have to go through DOT for approvals and, and USTA. Um, but that's uh, not, not readily be a problem. And looking the other direction, we have no, and there's nothing uh, striking our feet that way. You see all the way down the hill. This is just a demonstrated emergency vehicle uh, pathway that you'll come in. We also have access roads around the buildings to give them the fire in and a way to get to the back on each one of them, and they can speculate through other ways, but this is how they would come in here and back out. And this is again all conceptual, so it, you know, subject to fire department review and uh, as well as staff and the commission. So, uh, but just to prove that we, we can get fire in and out of this site. And then through the back to the renderings, um, I can just go through a little bit. I think that's about all I had. Kermit, you want to?
Thank you, Jason. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman again. Uh, my name is Kermit Qua. I'm a professional registered engineer in the state of Connecticut. I've been doing this as a traffic engineer since nineteen ninety-seven. So I'm just starting to map, twenty-eight years probably. Um, the, we, we did a traffic study. The first thing is we looked at the number of peak hour trips. That is peak out, you know, the, the number of trips generated by this three hundred units during the weekday morning peak hour and weekday afternoon peak hour. Uh, we determined the uh, these two peak hours based on the traffic counts we collected at area intersections.
Anyone struggling with memory problems should try.
So we, for this study, we looked at the four intersections. One, one is the side driveway, um, uh, Route Six. And also because we are on a town line, we also looked at the two intersections in Bethel. One is Route Six, Stone Hill Road and Old Hollyville Road. And one is Route Six and Big White Drive Way. And also, uh, we also looked at the same intersection as the previous application, Route Six and Route Twenty-Five. The peak hour trips, uh, as Attorney Bellis mentioned, are one hundred eleven for weekday morning peak hour and one hundred seventeen for the weekday afternoon peak hour. So there's always the question, how come you only have about trips of three hundred units? Uh, the reason is not all traffic occur during the same peak hour. And also the second point I want to make is the basis of these calculations is ITU menu. That's an industry standard. It's not something I come up with, it's an industry standard. So for the future generation, when these three hundred units are built and occupied, uh, at a driveway intersection on Route Six, we see no problem during both peak hours. Uh, traffic in and out will operate at a level of service A and C during the weekday peak hours. So there's no uh, traffic capacity or congestion concern at the future driveway on Route Six. At the other three intersections, uh, the previous intersection, Route Six and Route Twenty-Five, as we know, uh, from the previous application, the south, um, uh, traffic uh, going south towards Route Six will still continue to experience delays during the two peak hours. Um, to evaluate the net traffic impact of this development, we compared the no build scenario, in other words, with all the background traffic, including the gas station, including the uh, the sixty-seven apartments of Route Six and Route Twenty-Five. That's a no build scenario and a build scenario, that's, we have build scenario for these three hundred units. The only change in level of service between those two scenarios is one uh, level of service of one northbound approach at the uh, Route Six and Old Hollyville Road intersection in Bethel. Uh, the northbound approach will change from level of service D to a level of service E during the weekday afternoon peak hours. So that's not necessarily related to this application, but I'm just reporting it here. So overall, uh, based on these comparison of the two scenarios, the conclusion is, uh, traffic generate from, traffic generated from this development will not pose any public health or safety risks. All traffic from the development will be adequately and safely accommodated by the existing roadways in the area. Now, on the topic of safety, uh, Jason mentioned the sidelines. We will have added the sidelines, um, in a slide he showed about eight hundred feet of sidelines. So what are the actual requirements of the sidelines? We determined that based on the speed information we collected on Route Six in front of the site, based on speed information and using DOT criteria, the requirements are five hundred, five hundred sixty-six feet looking east and five hundred forty-four feet looking west. So uh, eight hundred feet with some weighting along the frontage will be more than adequate to meet these criteria. We also looked at the accident records on Route Five in front of the site, along the side frontage and at area intersections. Uh, during a three-year period, no accident was reported along the frontage of the site, meaning from the Bethel town line all the way to the intersection, Route Six and Suzie Drive, which is a drive to a residential development to the east. So that's a, a, a safety question. So overall, you know, there's no uh, traffic capacity issue. Uh, there will be no uh, traffic safety concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
I, I know that traffic's always a, I know that traffic's always a concern both to the residents that live in the area and to the commission. Um, unfortunately, the um, case law is really clear in Connecticut on eight thirty G. Um, they say that yes, if there's inconvenience or additional traffic, uh, that's not enough to deny an application for eight thirty G. Uh, in order to deny an application, there has to be a quantifiable safety problem at the intersection where the driveway is. And that's why we had Kermit do that analysis. Um, you know, I know the people behind me and the commissioner, whoever lives here, know it was that there's going to be, you know, there already is more traffic. I built houses here twenty years ago and I've seen the difference now than when I built twenty years ago. But um, that's not the standard that we have to use. You have to use the standard of whether uh, there is going to be a specific safety uh, problem because of this project. And I don't believe that there will be. So um, that's what I have as far as my presentation is for tonight. Um, I don't know if the commission has any questions for me or for, for either Kermit or for Jason. Um, but the idea here is that you take a look at the uh, text amendment. You take a look at whether uh, a, a zone change uh, under the criteria that I gave you for eight thirty G uh, would be permissible for three hundred units for an apartment building. And then uh, hopefully I come back in a month or two and I give you. And then hopefully I come back in a month or two and I give you final site plans and show you the concrete, this is what we're going to build. This is the building that we're going to build. This is the layout that has, that we're submitting and that we have wetlands plus it. So that's what I have. I don't know if you have any questions for me. Or anybody.
So anyone from the commission have questions?
Could you explain to me again how 830G can compel this body to approve tax amendment and zone change?
Yeah. So, do you want me to take the mic back? I gotta buy you guys a mic. No, that's all right. Yes, good question. Yeah. So there's a state statute, and that's our 830G. And in that statute, there's a subsection that says that you can file a zone change. And if a town requires, you can do it with conceptual site plans. And they list A, B, C, and D, what has to be on the conceptual site plan. So you may have, can't 830G for a second. Your board may have, for other applications that are not 830G, may have, may get an application for a zone change or a text amendment. And sometimes the applicant doesn't even have to bring in a conceptual site plan. They may say to you, we would like to change this zone to this. You look at it, there's no drawings for you to look at. You're just saying, we want to change the zone from A to B. And this is the text amendment, which is basically just a new regulation in your book. And you vote on it. But here, under 830G, the regulations and the statute says that you can, if a town requires it, you would have to give them conceptual site plans. I don't know whether your town requires it or not, but I decided to give it to you anyway because I think it makes it helpful. What I do know is that the case law that I've read says, basically, that the reason developers do this is for a couple of reasons. One, they may have to get a wetlands application approved. And the timing may not always line up. I don't know how long your, you know, the application will be in wetlands. Sometimes developers do it, I'm not saying in this particular application, but they do it to find out whether they're going to go ahead with the final site plans and spend all the money in stormwater management reports and all the reports that are needed for final site plans. So it's a financial thing. Trying to think of else. But the courts have basically said, look, there's nothing wrong with giving a zoning commission a zone change and text amendment with conceptual site plans and letting them act. The only thing, and I think I made this perfectly clear, is that that does not give the developer the right to go ahead. It's not an approval of a final site plan, can't go get a building permit. So it's just a first step. Did I answer your question? No. State statute and case law. What else do you, and a state regulation?
I'll repeat my question.
Okay.
Where in 830G?
You gotta pass the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You gotta pass the mic. Be here to answer questions, then answer all of them.
Where in 830G does it state that planning and zoning can be compelled to accept a zone change or a text amendment? It can be accepted with a site development plan, but you can't compel us to change our own zoning regulations.
I don't know if we're arguing over the word compelled. 830G means that your zoning regulations do not apply, right? They don't apply. It's a state law, and I created a regulation, and I call it a text amendment, but it's a regulation. It's not in your books because it's not, 830G is not governed by the local zoning regulations. So if you look at 830G, I think it was H, I'm trying to see. So that's the regulation. Maybe go up one. So this is a section. He's on the screen. Okay, right there. C, subsection C, it's the second paragraph. There is, "Any commission by regulation may require an affordable housing application. Seeking a zone change include the submission of a conceptual site plan describing the proposed development's total number of residential units and their arrangement on the property and the proposed development's road and traffic circulation, sewage disposal, and water supply." So what 830G is saying is when an applicant seeks a zone change, if the commission requires that you give them a conceptual site plan, this is what needs to be on. Then you can go down. Then there's a regulation. Regulations are put out by the, keep going, by agencies. This regulation's 8-30G-7, and it's called affordability plans and conceptual site plans. So they talk about 830G and blah, 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 blah. Keep going. Keep going. Yeah, right there. Seven. Look at number seven. Subsection seven. "A commission by regulation may require an affordable housing application that petitions for rezoning of the property." That's what I'm doing. "That is subject of the application shall be accompanied by a conceptual site plan. Any such regulation, however, shall not require the submission of the type of plans, studies, calculations, or similar detailed information that will otherwise be required in connection with site development, subdivision or resubdivision, which, when approved, will serve as the basis for the issuance of a building program." So what that paragraph says is that a conceptual site plan doesn't have to be as detailed as a final site plan. And scroll down a little more. So this is an appellate court case called Eureka. And give me a little excerpt. They're kind of long, so I'll find it. Keep going. And you'll see they're talking about affordable housing, blah, blah, blah. Keep going. So that was, oh, here we go. So here's an affordable housing application. So the plaintiff, right, one more line up. Right there, right there. "The plaintiff proposed to amend the town's zoning regulations to create a new housing opportunity development zone." Stop right there. I've also done the exact same thing, and I think I called it the Mount Pleasant. Let me get the exact word. Yeah, Mount Pleasant is states. Yeah. Mount Pleasant Development Zone. That's what I called it. So that's what I've sent into you. That's what I'm proposing. Then it goes on to say, "And to amend the town's zoning map." That's a zone change. "To reflect a rezoning of the subject property." In this case, it was from a corporate development district to the newly created housing opportunity development zone. That's what I'm proposing. "Along with this application, the plaintiff submitted a conceptual site plan that illustrated the potential future development of the subject property as a site for residential housing." And then it goes on, "The conceptual site plan submitted, 509 minutes in that case, blah, 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 blah." Go on. "The plaintiff was not seeking a formal site plan approval of the conceptual site plan." See the line sentence? Yeah. So that's exactly what I'm doing. And that is an appellate court case, and that, the appellate court cases are binding on, are considered binding state law. So that's how I got to that. Yes, sir.
I think what Greg is asking, because I'm asking you to, is why the zone change? Because my inference from that is you can't do an 830G in the existing zone. So can you talk to that one?
I think I understand the gentleman's question. So 830G is allowed anywhere in town, in any zone, except industrial zones. Except industrial zones. If it's an industrial parcel, that's an exception. So my, this piece that we're talking about is not, is not industrial. So you can file an 830G, and I can't tell you how many I've done in other towns, in one acre zones, in half acre zones, in commercial zones. It doesn't really matter. Because the state law, which is 830G, overrides your local zoning regulations. Now, I know this commission doesn't like it. None of the commissions like it because what they're saying to you is, we don't really, the application is not viewed by your local town's zoning regulations. What we're doing here is judging whether this zone, whether this new zone that I'm creating can be created. And the answer is it can be anywhere in town if it doesn't pose a substantial health, safety problem. Or if there is such a problem, the need is outweighed by the need for affordable housing. Or if you can make, if the developer can make a reasonable change to the application, that's, then you could ask them to do that. That's the standard, and I know you're not familiar with it, but that's the standard.
But if you can do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stand here because it's short. If you can do an 830G with the existing zoning, why the change?
Maybe you're asking me, can you do an affordable housing with your regulations? I'm not sure if that's what you're asking. All right, so, yeah, so the existing zones, maybe I'll read it this way. The existing zone that we're in on this particular application would not allow 300 units. It would not, under your zoning regulations. Clearly, no. The answer's no. So, so I can't do it under your zoning regulations because I wouldn't submit such an application because it can't be done. You understand that. So why am I doing it? Because it cannot be done under your local zoning regulations, or I would have done it under your local zoning. So therefore, the developer turns to the state statute that does allow it. Again, allows it provided that there's no substantial health and safety issues. So that's, I hope that answers it. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm a little slow in there. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Thank you.
There are various slices of ownership of a piece of property. We all have that. The contract purchaser owns the equitable title to the property. But there's a mortgage on the property, and that mortgagee has a legal title. I haven't gone through the mortgage document yet, but I would expect that any kind of change of zone that should affect the property would require the consent of the mortgagee. So just, we're going to continue the hearing, I'm sure.
Want me to answer a question?
Yeah. So the zoning, for a change of zone, in any change of zone, you need the permission of the owner, as Mr. Mitchell has stated. So in this case, we have the authorization of the owner. A contract purchaser under case law is considered to be allowed, they call it to be aggrieved, meaning that they can, they have the right, a contract purchaser has a right to either make an application to change the zone, or if the decision is against, if you guys both know, then to appeal. And that's by case law. So they consider a contract purchaser, by case law, to be aggrieved. And in this particular case, I've given you, in the original application, the authorization by the owner. Oh, you want to know about the mortgagee? Yeah. I don't, I've never seen a case where you need permission of the mortgagee.
I'm thinking about, of the contract terms. I'm talking about the terms, you know, of a particular mortgage. Because one mortgage may say you require consent, and one doesn't say it. But it's not a flat issue of law. It's a contract issue. And I just don't want things to go south.
So what would happen? I think I understand what you are. If, if in fact, this commission were to approve it, and the, then the buyer, in this case, who is the applicant, would end up paying off that mortgage because, so he can get titled free and clear. So that person would no longer have any interest. That, I say person, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Albert.
Thank you. I do have questions, but in the interest of time, I'll reserve for the next meeting. I'd like to open it up to the public now. Again, please keep your comments concise. We're getting on in hours, and we have multiple applications to go. So that I invite, if you want to come up. Again, a reminder to address the commission directly, not the audience, and to keep it brief.
Okay, good evening commissioners. My name is Maureen Teaking, 74th Christopher Road in Brookfield, Connecticut. My husband, Dennis Teaking, and I own and operate Pleasant Dental and the properties at 182 and 184 Mount Pleasant Road, directly next to the proposed development site. I'm here tonight to respectfully urge you to deny, or at the very least, heavily condition, this zone change. First, the current VPO zoning was carefully designed for low-impact professional use. Changing it to allow over 300 apartments is completely inconsistent with Newtown's comprehensive plan and the 2025 Plan of Conservation and Development. This would be spot zoning, not sound planning. Second, and most importantly, the proposal creates serious public safety problems. The entrance is located on a sharp curve of Mount Pleasant Road. A state highway there already carries heavy traffic with a passing lane directly outside the driveway to the proposed development. Sightlines are dangerously short. The westerly access to our property is actually the driveway to 188 Mount Pleasant Road. We've been using this driveway for 30 years, and we have a right to continue using it as an entrance and an exit. This means that patients, emergency vehicles, delivery trucks will force to mix with hundreds of daily trips from this project. The application has suggested the construction traffic will also be using this driveway. Any such arrangement would directly block the westerly access to our downtown office and put patients, customers, and delivery personnel at risk. Finally, this property lies near a mapped aquifer recharge area. A development of this scale demands full stormwater and aquifer impact study before any rezoning can be considered. Under both Newtown's zoning regulations and state law, even such an 8-30G, the commission has the authority, and in fact, the duty, to deny an application when it poses substantial health and safety risks that cannot be reasonably resolved. For these reasons, I urge you to protect the safety of the corridor and the integrity of his own zoning plan by denying this application. At minimum, the commission needs to require a full traffic and aquifer studies, relocation of the access away from our property, and a significant reduction in density. Thank you for your time and for entering my comments into the record.
Got a question, Ken. Do you have a USB-C connection? Uh, H, do you have an adapter? Okay. So then, I'd like to defer our brief presentation on sidelines. That includes photographs, and I would just prefer to defer it to the next hearing. Thank you. Howie Geiger, point.
Alright, my name is Howie Geiger, 46.
Yes, one, two, three.
Hey, my name is Howie Geiger, from 46 Joe Alport, in Newtown, Connecticut. I have made your safety concerns after reviewing the proposed driveway configuration and the conceptual site plan. There appears to be a centered divide at the entrance level for a short period of distance. From, from that point on, it's, it's one-way traffic. When you get up to the road, it's two-way traffic. So you have to, and, when the median ends. The estimated number of parking spots, as was explained before, is roughly 540 units. Add additional services that come in that, to the community, we are talking about a major traffic flood. I heard for the first time, only 111 people will use it during peak time. That's one-third of the number of houses. Hard to believe, but that's alright. The other problem is, the normal service community would be owing specific traffic flood. Building three, the largest unit, is at the north end of the community, 144 units. What, what happens when a two-way traffic lane is blocked for safety reasons? You can't get emergency vehicles up, you can't get fire equipment up. A center land, landscape median adds additional safety and must be installed to all three buildings. Without a median, this would be a major safety issue. Safety issue does not just apply to residents. One must consider all the traffic without the median, the risk of the accidents would be much higher. These landscape mediums are in place today at Liberty of Newtown. There's also fears that there are no emergency exits identified in the plan. Developing 300 units must have additional access, not just to the main highway. Newtown Woods, which has less than a third of the houses, has two emergency and fire accesses. The plan needs to be reviewed by the Newtown Fire Marshal. The proposed regulations need to specify the following. The driveway must be situated at a right angle to the street. The driveway must be divided by landscaping mediums, serving all three buildings. Emergency and fire assessments must be required. All roads must have a travel width of at least 20 feet. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Don Lewis. My wife and I have been residents at Liberty of Newtown for 21 years, and I serve on the board. Liberty of Newtown is adjacent to this, site of this project. I'd like to address building height. Current zoning restrictions in the town of Newtown allow for a minimum of three stories per building, a maximum of seven. Excepting one recently added, elderly housing zone where four stories were allowed. The maximum structural height allowed in any zone is six feet to the highest point of the building from the ground level on any side of the building. These height limitations were developed after consultation with firefighting experts in Newtown. As you know, as we all know, we do not have a municipal fire department, we have a volunteer fire department. The equipment in the volunteer fire companies is capable of working effectively within these stated restrictions. It's not enough for the developers to propose a section 9.2, 1.2B, that all buildings shall be designed and constructed in accordance with the Fire Code of the state of Connecticut. You must add to the proposal regulation that fire safety requirements must be compatible with Newtown Fire Company capabilities. It should also not be assumed that the developers' proposed 80-foot height of buildings can make safe in Newtown. An 80-foot height could uncount to six stories, or maybe even seven. Where is our control? Newtown fire officials need to weigh in on building height issues. The fire safety regulations in section 8.14 of the existing regulations should be incorporated into this proposal. An additional concern would be water pressure, as this property is at the very end of Aquarian's Newtown water line. The highest building on the property of Liberty of Newtown, the common development adjoining the property, has complained in the past about water pressure being low. We were warned this summer by Aquarian that we're in danger of running out of water, because the system well, for which we get our water, Mount Pleasant, was running dry. Adding 300 additional housing units would be most assuredly add to this problem, and even raises the question of sufficient water supply in the event of a fire emergency. It could even be recommended that the developer would need to construct a reservoir at the highest point of the property to accommodate a sufficient amount of water to extinguish a fire. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Ross Harrington, 46 Old Bethel Road. I would like to formally oppose the 312 units proposed on the 12 acres of 188 and 190 Mount Pleasant Road. To start with, I share a common order with the wetlands on the eastern side of this property. I do not perceive that any of that are mailings. I would like to check the records at the antiques. Considering that this site also crosses over into Bethel, there was no documents that I was aware of or was able to find, that the council governments, or the Western Connecticut Council of Governments must be sent this 30 days report. I'll need a continuance to review. This project does not follow the plan of conservation and development mandatory consistency finding, that's section 8.3D. They are looking to submit a conceptual plan. Health and safety can be defined by density. When you were talking 300 units, almost 1,000 parking spaces, six stories of project, a conceptual plan should not be able to be put forward. It is an effort to save money by the developer, I understand, putting forward specific plans like any other project, and that's what they're proposing today, not the specifics. And we're all up here reviewing the specifics. We're talking 300 units and 1,000 spaces. This is a major project in a very limited acreage area, that 12 acres, a substantial portion is to inland wetlands. This needs to be put forward very carefully. You do not have to accept that tax change or the zoning change. It is only an effort to save money by the developer, to be able to put forward those plans. At the very least, I would need a continuance, since I was not made aware of the specifics of this, in adjoining property. I would request a review and denial. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Heidi Winslow, and I live at 62 Joe Alport, which is part of Liberty of Newtown. I endorse thoroughly Mr. Rich's question about text amendment. There's nothing in the statute, 830G, that requires the commission to adopt new regulations in the name of the commission. The statute speaks only to zone change. Anyway, uh, no one can argue, however, I'll, I'll speak to the regulations, because that's what is being proposed here. One of the scottiest set of regulations I've ever seen, it's consistently inconsistent. There are many different provisions in the regulations that are directly in contrast with one another. But no one could argue with a regulation beginning that says that health and safety of all onsite persons and offsite persons are of the highest importance. And I think that if you're going to consider adopting a regulation, you need to put something at the beginning of it to that effect. The adjacent EH10 zone, which is Liberty of Newtown, has 100-foot side setbacks. The developer here is proposing 15-foot side setbacks, beside buildings that are five stories high. I suggest that that is not a sufficient distance from the side setback, especially as this is bordering on a very steep valley and a rocky property. I do question how firefighting equipment can gain adequate access to all sides of a five-story building with only a 15-foot setback. On the east side of the property, 188 Mount Pleasant Road, the property of Bussa Valley, which is owned mostly by Liberty of Newtown. And the northern two-thirds of that valley is dry. Uh, it's the lower, or the, the southern part that is swampy. Beside the dry part of these property line, 188 is really at the extreme edge of a deep valley. I was going to show you photographs, but we can't get our USB, we don't have an adapter, so can't show you how this looks. One of the developer's conceptual plans shows what appear to be numerous retaining walls for a short distance on the eastern side of their plan. And the tentative or conceptual site plan does not begin to show how the engineer proposes to cope with the construction of those numerous retaining walls without disturbing the property 15 feet away. Does show how the developer proposes to, or nor does it show really, how the developer proposes to divert stormwater runoff away from a Liberty property during construction or thereafter. So I propose that the zone regulations contain a provision that disturbance of steep slopes shall be avoided to the greatest extent possible, and that the developer's proposed zone should contain that provision is imperative. It's not enough for the applicant to tell you that they'll address all of these health and safety concerns satisfactorily in the future. Uh, the side setback should be at least 20 feet, probably more.
Three minutes, so you gotta wrap up.
Okay, last two sentences. A further, very important addition to the proposed new regulations would be a requirement that there be no increased rainwater discharge onto adjoining private properties. Liberty wants to keep that valley dry, it's where our walking trail is, and we appreciate you joining us. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Linda Hasky. I live at 64 Suzy Drive, which is part of Liberty of Newtown condo association as well, and I'm board of directors there. We've seen a couple different conceptual site plans attached to the application. One says 300 units, one says 308, one says 104, um, one veteran, another says 196. Uh, the developer needs to withdraw one of these conceptual site plans, or make it clear that he is posing them as alternatives. Several issues that are addressed in Newtown's existing regulations are missing from this developer's proposed new zone. Some of these issues implicate health and safety, those are the ones I'll talk about. Putting utility lines underground, maximum slopes for interior walkways, parking and driveways, landscaping and screening. A requirement that the stormwater drainage system not only be prepared by the applicant's engineer, but also that it must meet all health and safety needs to protect this property and adjacent properties. A lighting requirement that all private streets, private areas and sidewalks be eliminated, and that no direct rays from such lighting shall fall off the lot. And a provision that the building of the common area clubhouse and pool must be completed before the commencement of the phase three of the projects. We just believe that all of these issues need to be addressed for health and safety reasons in any proposed new zone. Thanks for your time.
So again, I, we'll go with five more speakers, please, then we'll continue the hearing.
Good evening. Two years old, 23, Frank Gordon, also part of Liberty of Newtown. A new zone is not necessary for an 830G development at 188, 190, Mount Pleasant Road. For the Connecticut General Statute 830G, an application for a building housing may be submitted in a business zone without requiring the creation of a new zone or a zone change. A recent example demonstrate this. The developer of 128, 130, Mount Pleasant Road followed the proper procedure by applying on the existing business zone rather than seeking to create a new one. In contrast, the developer of 188, 190, Mount Pleasant Road, it does simply request a change to an existing zone, it is seeking the creation of a new site-specific zone called Mount Pleasant Development District, Town Beautiful. Section 830G protects developers who seek a change of zone, but it does not protect those who attempt to compel the commission to create a parallel new zoning designation. The statute complies not provisions for creating a new zone only for modified existing ones. The applicant suggests that health and safety issues can be postponed by creating a new zone under the site planning stage. This is incorrect. The planning and zoning commission has a continuing obligation to evaluate health, safety, and welfare considerations at all stages of the zoning review. Approving new regulations solely for this project would allow the developer to bypass critical safety reviews and their claims that the site plan fully confronts with the town's older top zoning standards, thereby limiting the commission's ability to impose further scrutiny. But the commission, as the commission knows, the Connecticut General Assembly passed HB5002, a public act that is passed, they just gave a session, June 2025, that would require local firm commissions to enact a form of housing regulations. But the government vetoed, I repeat, the government vetoed the act. So it is not a law at this time that the commission is required to create such regulation. But in this firm commission, it needs to take ownership and responsibility for all new regulations. for all new regulations. Dear commissioners, the governor's veto of HB 5002 gives you the power to deny the developer's application. Please do so. I'm attaching the letter that the governor sent to the Secretary of State on his comments in denying vetoing the application, HB 5002, and thank you.
Hi, Frank Scalzo, 175 Mount Pleasant Road, right across the street from 188 190. I just have a couple of things to say. I know they're proposing to cut the sightline down to make the exit of the property more accessible and a better sightline. But I have to say, on a westerly sun, when you cut that sightline down, the sun is going to be right in everybody's eye worse than it is now. I've lived there since 1993. And turning into my driveway when the sun is out is terrible. When you cut that grade down, it's going to be worse. That's one problem. The other thing is the traffic engineers said there's been no accidents from my, from the corner of Big Y to Suzie Lane. That is untrue, I can tell you right now. Because a year ago, maybe less, three poles were taken down right in front of my house, from Suzie Lane to the dentist's office, by one car, okay? So there are accidents there. There've been rear enders right in front of Liberty. There are accidents there, a lot, and there is a passing zone right there. So there is traffic concern. And when 84 closes, or there's heavy traffic, there's heavy traffic there. So I think a traffic survey or study needs to be done. Because I've lived there since 1993, and there are accidents, and traffic has gotten heavier. And there's going to be more than 111 cars coming in and out of there, especially with deliveries and everything else. Thank you.
Dave Eckard, 6 Cider Mill Road. This just all feels really premature to me. It hasn't gone through in the Wetlands. I don't, there are other 830G applications that did not require or ask for these zone changes, including one we heard tonight. I think you guys need to deny this. It seems like a fishing expedition for them to find out what the opposition's going to be so they could plan when they come back accordingly. I think they've heard that their fishing expedition has produced results. So I think you guys should just not do this. Because when they come back, I will be limited to talking about health and safety. I want to just talk to you with your planning hats on. Planning was mentioned a couple of times tonight. And when the current zones were planned, they were planned for a certain amount of growth. You guys are hearing applications tonight and over the next couple of weeks that will increase Newtown's population by over 5%. This means there will be significant increase in the cost of community services to us, the taxpayers. According to the American Farmland Trust, when they do cost of community services studies, whenever you convert open land into residential developments, for every dollar of new tax revenue, there's a dollar 70, seven zero, of new cost of community services. All these applications taken in totality are going to increase that cost way more than the revenue they're going to generate. And it just so happens that most of them are concentrated near the Beaufort border. So those costs of services are going to fall on Newtown taxpayers, but where are those people going to shop? They're going to shop in Beaufort. So any offset is going to be even less. So I just want you to keep that in mind with your planning hats on as you hear these things in totality. And again, I request that you deny this fishing expedition. Thank you. Okay, in the interest of time, I know a lot of times the applicant, in a, that replies on the spot. I ask that, given the fact that we're planning on continuing the public hearing, you provide your replies to the comments and even some of our questions at that point. If that works, again, and to the members of the town here, we appreciate the civility and constructive nature of the comments. They're heard and part of the record, and thank you to the applicants. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, November 6th, same location, 7:00 PM. Hopefully 7:00 PM, there's probably going to be another long meeting. And again, November 6th, 7:00 PM, this location to continue. Could I get a motion from one of the members? Who?
I said so move.
Okay, could I get a second? Second, Greg. All those in favor of continuing the meeting?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll see you then. Thank you. For those who are going to be leaving based upon this, again, please leave quickly with minimal disruption because we want to move right into our next application. Thank you again. Conversation in the hall.
Okay, a legal notice for application 25.24 by Colony Curran Juan for an amendment to a special exception for a property located at 116 South Main Street.
Excuse me, please hold conversations outside in the hallway.
So as to allocate areas of outdoor display and storage of goods and locations on the existing site areas that are not currently allocated for such use. As demonstrated on a set of plans titled Tractor Supply Company Rezoning Project, 116 South Main Street, Newtown, Connecticut, 06470 dated September 4, 2025, and all supporting documents submitted to the Land Use Agency dated September 15, 2025.
My name is John Toll, and I work for Onyx Creative, who's an architect and engineer for Tractor Supply. Tractor Supply is looking to add some additional display and storage space around the property. I think, or you should have a plan that was passed out too long. So they're looking at really the back left of the building and the rear of the building, behind the fence in the area, where they want to drop some pallets for, like wooden pallets and soil and that sort of thing. So they're going to take tent marketing spaces in the back left, and which leaves them with 72 spaces, including four ADA stalls. And then parking is 58. So it stays within, in the awkward way for parking. All the areas are existing asphalt, with the exception of one little grassy area behind the fence, outdoor. The hatched areas are frequency-approved areas. Correct. So I don't know. So this back corner, these parking spaces that are right here, and then these little spaces. And these will all be stored on pallets and movable, so they will necessarily carry around.
Any questions or comments from the Commission? Okay.
Thank you. So I have one question in for you. So years ago, when we approved Tractor Supply, part of our approval was a great buckering between the building and 25. And I know there's a few planks in there, but it's not really a very good buffer, in my opinion. So I'm wondering if we might consider adding some more buckering planks.
I think we agree with that. Any other questions or comments from the Commission?
Just a clarification on the plans. They show that the transit box, the Conex box that's in the back for storage as part of the plans, that is not allowed by our regulations. The applicant knows this, but it is noted on there as is existing right now, but will be removed as part of this.
Thank you, Rob. So I'd like to invite any members of the public for comment on this application. Can you state your name and address for the record?
That's the road, 42 Apple Blossom Lane. And I'd just like to ask if there is any additional lighting or any regulations generated or something like that? Because I haven't seen any, because I just got the notice. So I don't know whether anything matters.
We can get an answer to that before we pass the mic back and forth.
Yeah, you need to come sign.
Oh, yeah, if you could just sign this, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public?
So my name is Lena Sampeo. I'm the neighbor directly to the left when looking at Tractor Supply. Right now, like, there's a lot of garbage that comes into our property, even over the fence from their property. I'm just wondering, like, is this going to make more garbage? What kind of machinery are they going to use to move these pallets? And also to address that, like, in the evening, many times there's trucks that are not supposed to be idling out there, and they're idling all night long. This has been addressed, like, many times with us walking over or talking to them about it.
Thank you, thank you.
Just any other questions or comments? Okay, we got another one?
Thank you, and thank you to the Commission for your time and service to our community. My name is Dylan Merrick, 19, Whipper Will Hill Road, Newtown. I appreciate the comments that have been brought up by our community because Tractor Supply Company is a despicable company that engages in racial bias and discrimination. Thank you, as documented in their own policies.
Anybody else? Okay. Give you a chance to respond.
So as far as lighting goes, or generators, there are no changes. The site lighting is staying just the way it is. As far as the additional pallets of material, there's a, currently, there's a forklift that's out back that they move their supplies around with so that those pallets would be moved with a fork truck. I can't speak to some of the operational comments that regarding, like, trucks idling or trash that's blowing, that might be blowing around. But I can certainly note it and bring it back to them.
Before we close the public hearing, I mean, I made this comment before to businesses, but also to residents. They've got to be good, considerate neighbors. And that just goes without saying. You know, these things, these things do happen. A business, you know, is in an area surrounded by other residents, and we just have to be considerate. You know, I hope for the ownership that these things do get passed on. And I agree, you know, I appreciate the comments about the nature of the company. That can't be something that affects any decision that we have on something like this and what kind of practices they engage in. That said, you know, if there are no other questions or comments from the Commission, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So I think we got a so move from Greg and a second from Connie. Thank you. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Any discussion or comments for the Commissioners before we put this up to vote?
Like the additional planting in birth between 100 and 25?
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Yeah, can we, so can we, like, recommend to them? Can we, like, is anybody asking agreement with me, I guess? No, you don't care that it looks ugly?
No.
Well, no, but we could, we could, we could make it a condition for the approval.
I think we should, I'll stand if I think maybe one has something to add.
My feeling is one doesn't, yeah.
I understand, I thought, I thought it's not a condition.
No, I agree with you. I agree that, and that's another thing that definitely should be passed on, that, you know, that's an expectation. And we've, you know, we have a lot of requests as Commissioners, and we can't go around trying to enforce everything either. So, you know, we ask that applicants and builders, you know, comply with our request of the sake of town and the neighbors. So I think, you know, that this is state of the record as well. If they don't do it, they are not being good neighbors.
Right, you simply ask?
Yes.
So application 25.25 to 4 by Colony Curran Juan for an amendment to a special exception for a property located at 116 South Main Street. So as to allocate areas of outdoor display and storage of goods and locations on the existing site areas that are not currently allocated for such use. As demonstrated on a set of plans by Tractor Supply Company Rezoning Project, 116 South Main Street, Newtown, Connecticut, 06470 dated September 4, 2025, and all supporting documents submitted to the Land Use Agency dated September 15, 2025, revise September 25, 2025. Is hereby found consistent with the Newtown zoning regulations and shall be approved. Be it further resolved, the approval shall become effective November 8, 2025.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving? Aye. Close. Okay. Connie, did you go? You did say aye, okay. So this passes four to one. Good luck. And again, please pass on to the ownership. Okay, thank you.
We appreciate that. Two seconds, sorry.
Okay, legal notice, application twenty-five point two five by Civil One for a special exception for property located at ninety Mount Pleasant Road so as to construct two athletic fields, a proposed clubhouse building, seven, seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five square foot footprint and associated parking, landscaping, store drainage, and utility improvements as demonstrated on a set of plans titled Proposed Athletic Field Complex, planning and zoning permitting set not for construction. Ninety Mount Pleasant Road, Newtown, Connecticut, MBL five dash three dash six dated August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, revised September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and also putting documents submitted to the land use agency dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. It was published in Newtown D on October third, twenty twenty-five, and October tenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, good evening, commissioners. On behalf of the applicant, my name is Chris Palowski. I'm a licensed professional engineer, state of Connecticut, with Civil One. Here to talk about ninety Mount Pleasant Road. I know it is late, I will try to keep as brief as possible to save time, and I appreciate any volunteers, so thank you. There's some quick housekeeping items. I do have a signed affidavit and proof of mail and the public hearing that I'm going to turn in. And I also have a petition or a support signature list of over sixty Newtown residents in support of our application. I'd like to submit for the record. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to start tonight by bringing up Mr. Peter DeMeco. He is the owner, applicant, representative. Let's talk a little bit about the project and just say some words. So thank you, Peter, for the time.
Thank you. My name is Peter DeMeco. A Newtown resident for over forty years. Although I recently moved to Brookfield. Why are we here proposing this project? I own a premier soccer court called AC Connecticut with an office in Newtown at one fifty-three South Main Street. Over the years, we have asked to play in Newtown to go there, not enough field space. So we are using fields in Mount Danbury and the Brookfield, and also at West Combe. At the same time, we have owned the property ninety Mount Pleasant for about fifteen years. We have tried to develop and or sell the property for various uses multiple times, and it has not worked out. While we have been paying taxes and sore assessments. Therefore, recently, I've decided to explore the possibility of bringing the two things together, the property which we own and the soccer court which we own, together and bring it into Newtown. This will bring to Newtown a high level of soccer, which will be a great benefit to the Newtown community. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Again, on behalf of the applicant, Chris Palowski, Civil One, Civil Engineers. So we're here seeking a special exception or special permit application to ninety Mount Pleasant. The reasons I'll get into, but basically the sports or recreation use is a special permit use within the zoning regulations of the town in Newtown. So just so everyone's aware, the site, the site is shown in the green here on the screen. You can see the red laser pointer. So we have Interstate eighty-four eastbound and westbound running through the north of the site. And then you have Whipper, Wharton Road running to the east, Mount Pleasant Road, also known as Route twenty-five to the south. Then you have neighboring property off to the west, which has been subject to number of proposals over the recent years. But again, are not part of this current application. So this is our survey of the site. The property is about thirty-three point two one acres. There's an existing driveway access off Mount Pleasant Road, which will be removed. There was previously a residential house and farm on the property. The property is currently significantly overgrown with invasive and other plants. It's completely been overtaken, if you will. The residential house has been torn down in recent years. So currently, it's just a natural wooded piece of land, if you will. So this is our site plan. We're proposing a driveway off of Mount Pleasant Road or Route twenty-five. You can see that there on the left side of the screen. There's going to be one hundred forty-nine parking spaces on the site. We're proposing two athletic fields. There's going to be a seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five square foot footprint clubhouse as well that's located in the middle. So you can see the drive that comes in. And then in the center, in between the two fields, you have parking and the clubhouse, which is adjacent to the field closest to the road. Fields will feature bleachers as well as benches for the athletes. We also have dedicated viewing areas. We're going to show some renderings of the site at the end of the presentation. But the clubhouse is basically going to be split levels. So it's going to be one lower level out of the parking lot, the lot rooms, et cetera. And then the upper level is going to have various patios so you can have a viewing experience of both fields, kind of create that community feel. There's going to be a fence around both of the fields. Some other notes, we're keeping the seventy-five foot natural buffer that's required as part of your zoning regulations. So if you look to the bottom of the screen there, there's a dash line that call out that's in purple. That is the seventy-five foot buffer kind of minimum we are providing now. Obviously, in most places, we're a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five feet of that natural wooded buffer that's going to remain to those residences to the bottom of the page or to the east. This current application, not including the turf fields, features just over two acres of impervious area. Previous applications that were approved here were over nineteen acres. Those are for medical offices and industrial, as well as some apartment complexes. So we're almost ten times less in terms of impervious acre. Even if you count the turf fields in that calculation, we're still four or five times less the amount of impervious covered in the site. We meet all the zoning regulations and not seeking any variances or any sections for those setbacks, et cetera, with a zoning table on our site plan that demonstrates such. This is our grading and drainage plan here. The site is naturally sloped. Stormwater flows down the hill from the east to the west. There's a high elevation of six forty at the property line and a low elevation on the western side of the site of four fifty where there's an existing wetland system that is shown in the red dash line on the screen here. Here currently, before the new wetlands connection, we anticipate getting continued tonight so we can finish our move on the permit application. So again, we are covering all of the various permits that we do need. We're proposing a stormwater infiltration basin. Highlighted with a blue in the dash at the top of the screen. That's going to have a hydrogenated separator, multiple hydrogen separators and seven and four bays before the stormwater actually ends up in that basin. We have done numerous soil testing on the site. Some positive things are there is a positive filtration rate. So we did get an infiltration rate of six inches per hour. We are using a conservative two inches per hour in that infiltration basin. We also did receive a few comments from the town engineer. We will respond to those comments before the next meeting. In addition to the infiltration tests on the site, we did tests to locate and identify depths of the rock. Thankfully, there are, as far as we can tell in our test, that we did not identify any rock. So there will not be any blasting or fire as part of this application. Site is nearly balanced in terms of earthwork, in terms of mornos on the drainage. Top of the screen, the dart lines that you see are curtain drains. So that'll catch runoff that runs from the hillside, the existing wooded area. That'll direct it to either side of the playing field. You'll notice there's two large level spreaders. This will spread the water out and continue that sheet flow down the natural course of the wooded area before entering the wetlands. Additionally, we have what's called treatment drain for our stormwater system. So beginning when the water gets, it drains, then it'll flow to a catch basin with deep sumps. This catches provides some initial water quality treatment, and it continues down the pipes and enters into a hydrogenated separator. There's two hydrogenated separators. One is located closer to where the red dot on the screen currently is being shown, and the other is located in the corner of the field closer to the rear of the site near the carpet. These hydrogenated separators provide some pre-treatment in terms of water quality. You'll remove all your trash, footfalls, et cetera. From there, the water will continue down the stormwater pipe before entering seven and four bay. This is another stormwater technique that we use for treatment. This will catch any initial sediment that's washed down into the basin, and then the water will flow into the remaining portion of the infiltration basin or infiltrate during the high intensity storms. That will any water that collects in the basin at a certain level will output to another level spreader before entering the wetlands. So we've done extensive amounts of stormwater renovation for treating all the way up to the hundred meter storm event as far as the town regulations to twenty twenty-four package stormwater manual. Now, one other, this quick note I'd like to make, it's not on these plans currently revising them. We have identified a PPHOS-free artificial turf product that will be used. Sorry, thank you, Rob. We have identified a PPHOS-free artificial turf product that will be used for these fields, and we will have more information on that at the next meeting. It was something the Wetlands Commission asked us to provide. Thank you. This is our soil erosion incentive control plan dependent, designed according to the twenty twenty-four package. So it's all our erosion incentive control guidelines. At the bottom of the screen, we have sil, we have sil fence. Also have sil fence and table backing to prevent those wetland areas from any construction sediment runoff. All of the proposed catch basins on site will have sil sets. There will be temporary seating along the steeper slopes of the ocean control blankets. There will be an anti-tracking pad, construction entrance at the beginning of the site. There will be sediment traps to catch any sediment, catch any sediment runoff scattered throughout the site. You can see the three come down, identified in the low lying areas of the site. In total, we have thirteen point eight eight acres of disturbance. That's outlined by the dash line around the perimeter of the entire site. Again, that's simply to construct the fields, the parking lot, and associated driveway areas and all the plantings and everything. Our utility plan, the septic plan is currently on the screen. So the site will be served on public water. We're doing the water main extension located on the left side of the screen here. And then we will run a tap from the road onto the site. The building will not be sprinkled. I know there has been issues in town, in the town with the aquarium. So in the event that we cannot get public water, we will explore the well option on site. But currently, the plan is for domestic water. We do not need sprinklers in the building. So it's just a two inch domestic water line for your toilets and your sinks, et cetera. We don't need a six or eight inch fire line for the proposed building on site. It's smaller and does not need to be sprinkled. Electric is currently going to be tapped from the existing pole on Mount Pleasant Drive. It's going to run underground near the driveway up until the building. There's going to be a transformer next to the building that will serve the electric service on the site. Underneath the parking lot is the proposed septic system. We have done soil testing in conjunction with Newtown Health Department. We are going to be going through the process of receiving approval for our plan for that septic system. So again, that is going to be reviewed and approved under the Newtown Health Department. Please, Bill. Thank you. This is our proposed landscaping plan. We're proposing mostly native plants. There's actually a couple that brought to our attention that are going to be swapping before the next hearing. But some of the plant entries that we are proposing include automated maples, eastern red buds, hollies, mountain laurels, azalea bushes. We have significant landscaping plantings throughout the parking lot islands. You can kind of see them on the screen there. And then we also have some trees, larger shrubs, that kind of act as a buffer on the bottom edge of the site, kind of top of your screen, that's going to protect that wetland area as well as provide some more buffering and screening that exists in wetland body, because we want to be mindful of that in our design. This is our lighting plan for the site. So currently, we're showing four larger twenty-four, currently forty-foot height poles for the soccer field. We have been, again, informed that we're going to be decreasing those light poles to twenty-four feet according to Newtown regulations. So before the next meeting, you will find a revised lighting plan. Regardless, the light is going to be concentrated on the soccer fields, on the driveways, and the parking areas. One thing I want to mention is, according to Newtown regulations, the regulation facility will not operate past nine P M. Monday through Saturday or past seven P M. on Sunday. That is in your regulations, and we intend to meet those regulations. The foot panels also are not going to spill off the property. So everything will be contained, again, to those fields, driveways, parking areas, et cetera. So this is our floor plan of the proposed building. Going to call up Mr. Phil Clark, CEO of Claris Design Built. In a few minutes here, just to talk about what the building's going to look like. It provides some renderings. The last item today that I want to talk about is traffic. So we did submit a traffic study as part of our application. We use the I T E trip gen for soccer complex land use code. In the peak hour during the weekday A M., we're going to expect three vehicles in the complex. That is very low. During the weekday P M. hour, we expect thirty-four vehicle trips total. During the Saturday peak hour, we expect seventy-five vehicle trips total. And during the Sunday peak hour, we expect fifty-eight vehicle trips total. So the highest number out of there will be during the Saturday peak hour, where the total trips in and out of the site expect to generate seventy-five vehicles. We did full counts from Connecticut G O T in twenty twenty-two on the site. We were near in the site area. The average annual daily traffic was eleven thousand one hundred vehicles based upon that count. The G T R interpretation and statement that the new anticipated traffic volume generated by the development can be accommodated by the adjacent roadway network without any adverse impact on the current operating conditions. We are providing the minimum site distance. So the current speed limit out there is forty-five miles per hour. We found through the data that the speed that actually is about fifty-five miles an hour is our speed. So we use the fifty-five mile an hour site distance. So we are providing six hundred and ten feet of intersection site distance on the driveway. This may involve some monitoring trimming in the right way, but that will all be part of a Connecticut G O T approach of permit. I'm sure this commission will favor the deposit application. Just some other notes, crashes. Within three quarters of a mile of the site, there were thirty-nine full crashes, according to records from police in the last four years up until August twenty twenty-five. The majority of these crashes occurred at the intersection of Mount Pleasant Road and Hollyville Lane, which is down the road from our site. So again, not in front of our site. And one last note I'd like to make to some traffic in general is that other permitted uses that have been approved on this site or could be proposed on this site for this zone, including hotels, office buildings, and industrial uses generate significantly more traffic than our proposed athletic complex of two fields. Again, a lot of sense of energy time. So I'd like to just invite Mr. Phil Clark of Claris Design Built up to say a few words and show some renderings of the proposed building. Thank you.
Thank you.
It started well, he's doing that. Phil Clark, Architect of Record. Also, I am a minority owner of the property. Disclose that. It's a, from the renovation, you can see it's a two-story building, very basic, low-profile masonry structure. Second floor will be hardy board shingles with a metal roof. The, on the, on the upper level, which will face the Very simple structure, but the tones are gray and white, and the gold is totally high from the second floor to the top roof. I'm going to keep it as low as I can. Pretty much it.
Thank you. And to the applicant, thank you for your patience in getting to this at this hour, so we appreciate that. Before I open it up to the public, any questions or comments from the commission? And I will preface by saying, remember, we're probably, we are going to be continuing this, so I don't want to have a lot of questions from the commission. So if there's something urgent that is left hanging, let me know now. If not, we will ask it on November 6th.
Just a comment, so you have time to think about it for the next one. You know, we're talking about traffic, and we talk about peak hours, how many, how many traffic events in a peak hour. Worst-case scenario, it may not be a good business plan, worst-case scenario, we got two games at the same time. Stands are full, games are over, and everybody's heading for the exit in 15 minutes. With that narrow driveway, of course, there's a choke point on how many people can get out. So that shouldn't, may not create the problem that I might anticipate, but just something about.
Necessary, if necessary, we can stagger the games by 15 minutes or a half hour so that you won't get that.
Yeah, makes sense to say.
Great question. And additionally, the driveway component of this correct to keep everybody kind of on the site, so it's not like creating a traffic jam at that intersection per se. Everybody will be queued in that long driveway, so you only have one car in 30 minutes in the time. Thank you.
Good evening. One question about the last category. I want to confirm 100% native species.
At this time, there are not 100% native species, but we are going to be revising the plan to feature 100% native species. There's like a couple that we missed, and I apologize about that, but we will correct that and have 100% native species on the plans.
Okay, so I'd like to open it up to the public. So just before, we're going to limit it to five people commenting at this point. Again, there'll be opportunity at further hearings for this, but with that, again, state your name and address for the record.
Patrick in Polletown, 13 Whittawillie Hill Room, Newtown. One thing is, hasn't been mentioned yet, was mentioned at the wetlands, is this seven pro? Okay. With all due respect to Mr. D'Amico and Mr. Clark, have earned excellent reputations in what they have done for Newtown, but this proposal is in no way qualified for this location and will disrupt the peace and quiet that we have worked so hard all our lives to establish. I hope the principals who have in the past and concerned about Newtown citizens will listen to and consider the damage the families living here may have to undergo. There are many reasons that this kind of noise will generate from such a facility and that it can cause physical, emotional, and medical harm to the neighbors and the adjoining neighborhood. Noise pollution has long been considered a health hazard. The potential impact on children could be serious because of evidence shown that once exposed to excessive noise, the body may overreact with repeated exposures and will find the negative effects. In kids, noise can increase psychological stress, raise blood pressure, and decrease overall quality of life. It can also increase hyperactivity and lower reading scores. Just how badly will the noise affect the elderly and those struggling with medical issues? Our quality of life will be adversely affected and can be harmed, and can harm every Newtown citizen in the adjoining area and certainly on Whittawillie Hill Road. The noise on these fields will often last all day into the evening hours. If public address systems are employed, then the noise level increases even more than just having crowds yelling and screaming during matches. We will be unable to open our windows, sit on the deck, and enjoy almost any date or have family over to celebrate, as Mr. D'Amico knows. I had to call him one day several years ago when my family was celebrating my birthday and asked him to shut down the dirt bikers on that proper, which he promptly did. The bottom line is our entire neighborhood's quality of life will be adversely affected, not just interfered with. We have a right to live in relative peace and quiet, or are we to live with the rest of our lives unable to enjoy all we have worked for so that two soccer fields can disrupt our way of life as long as we live there? This is the most inappropriate setting for this athletic project. The other side of this, besides horrible living conditions, is there may be medical consequences for many of the families on this street, young and older alike. I would suggest that this commission consult with Newtown Medical Department regarding noise and the damage that can be done to our health. I hope that this is given your sincere evaluation. The bottom line is, we cannot live with incessant noise on a government. In the duties of the PNC Commission, it states the PNC is responsible for multi-quarterly and quartet development of the town and the general welfare and prosperity of its residents. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Please sign in.
Sherri Wright, 10 Boulder Creek Road. Thank you guys for your time. It's way past my bedtime. AC Connecticut is one of the premier clubs in our area. We have top talent, we have top coaches. We do not own a facility. It's the only thing we are really lacking in this sports world. Geographically, Newtown is very centrally located to many of our AC families. This location is right off of 84. It does not adhere with our town, however, it does bring some revenue to our local businesses. This is not a burden on our schools, it's not a burden on our taxpayers, it's not a burden on Park and Rec. This is a park-like facility, it's encouraging healthy habits for our kids, it's embodying the small-town, community-oriented spirit that Newtown has. And I know that this always comes down to the bottom line and a lot of other things, too. It's also a source of revenue. Just good paraphracts here, and I just wanted to finish with, I understand that this is, there's a lot of apprehension about change and development, and Newtown is very different than it was, you know, when I was a kid and even from 20 years ago, 10 years ago, et cetera. But I think Mr. D'Amico has established himself in this community. He's a reliable member. The Newtown Youth Academy and its continued success and growth of AC Connecticut should alone be the necessary comfort in knowing that he's going to do what's in the best interest of our community. And I just wanted to end with a quote that our former first selection, Pat Lodger, had said in reference to Mr. D'Amico. He has really honored Newtown over the years with his generosity and his solid values. What strikes me the most about Peter is that every time the town reaches out to him for help, his answer is always yes. I hope that my son gets a chance to play on these fields in the near future, and I hope that Newtown affords Mr. D'Amico the courtesy of the ask for this proposal. I just also wanted to ask, I have a letter here from another resident in town. Do I have permission to read that on her behalf?
Sure.
Okay. This is from Melissa Antman, 15 and Todd and Lake Drive. Dear members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as a lifelong Newtown resident and proud 1996 graduate of Newtown High School, I am writing in strong support of the proposed soccer fields and complex. I grew up in this community, attended Newtown schools, and had the privilege of playing soccer for Newtown High School before going on to compete at the Division I level. The lessons I learned on the fields here, teamwork, discipline, and community pride can stay with me throughout my life. Now, as a parent raising my family in Newtown, I see how important it is to continue offering these same opportunities for our children. My older daughter is heading to college next year, and my younger daughter currently plays high school soccer. We chose AC for her development because of their professionalism, high standards, and outstanding coaching staff. The club will be an incredible addition to our town, offering not just competitive soccer, but a nurturing environment that builds confidence, character, and community. Having a dedicated soccer complex in Newtown would provide a tremendous benefit, not only for local players and families, but for the town as a whole. It will serve as a gathering place for our community, a point of pride for our youth programs, and an investment in health, well-being, and engagement of our next generation. This project represents an investment in our community's health, vitality, and future. It will bring people together, strengthen local programs, and provide generations of local families with a place to play, grow, and thrive. And keep a grateful for your consideration, and hopefully you will support this project with appreciation, Melissa Antman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dave Eckert. I just, I think this could be a great thing for town, but I think pollution is worthy of your concern. Noise and light pollution for the neighbors, I don't know what could be done about that. Perhaps rules that there are no horns used, no car horns beat, maybe the stands only base Route 25, I don't know, maybe there's some screening, but out of consideration for the neighbors, I would ask you to consider things like that. I'm also concerned about pollution into the groundwater and ultimately into Pond Brook. I'm really excited to hear that they're going to use a product that doesn't have PFOS or forever chemicals. I just encourage you guys in preparation for the continued hearing to do a little research online about turf. I've learned that the PFOS are in the grass element of the turf, the green part, and there are alternatives, sounds like they found one, which is great. But there is infill material, which is that rubber stuff that your kids all brought to your house when they empty their cleats, take their cleats off at the end of whatever games they played. And then there's backing, which is the padding underneath. DEP considers turf fields to be impervious surface A, so you do need to consider impervious surface of the fields as well, overall, in the overall proposal. And DEP also has some guidelines. A lot of turfs have zinc, which does leach into the groundwater and it kills wildlife, and it affects human life that consume the water. There is heavy metals, there are microplastics even in the non-PFOS grass element. So that's your crash course for me, but don't take it from me. It's a quick Google search, and you'll probably come up with some additional questions to ask if Edmund Wetlands doesn't ask them first. Thank you.
Karen Martin, Osborne Hill Road, Newtown. Just some pieces of information that I was thinking about with this proposal. Professional teams can roster up to 30 players, but only dress 18 for a match. Now, look at that information with regard to the application before you, several things come to mind. If 30 players are rostered and show up, that's 30 players for one team. If two teams play a game that's filled with about 60 players, that would show up on one field. You're asking for two fields. In 2007, a proposal was given to Planning and Zoning and was rejected for one field on the same property. Let's see. There are also coaches for the four teams and other personnel to aid in the game, plus those individuals who are stacked in the concession stand. And being a soccer mom, I know that people arrive a half hour earlier before games, so it really isn't a different parking, you're looking at how many people already? We're up to what, 120 players for two fields? People come a half hour earlier, yours will fill another 120 minimum. In addition, there are the only members who made friends and interact with their coaches, scouts, who are there to assess players for a new team. This latter number of scouts are consistently present to look at talent on the fields. There is no way to estimate the number of attendees. While the others will be parking on grassy areas when there are no parking spots available, it's come to my attention that the applicant maybe has to additional parking spaces and a much larger concession stand, which will again add to the impervious service, creating and more eroding of the area. The number of individuals who will attempt to acquire parking will be more estimated than the estimates before you. In addition, there is one roadway into and out of this complex. What happens when the games end and new ones start, when the other people arrive a half hour early? How will they access the complex? To enter and leave, the roadway should require a right turn only, as exit turning left on Mount Pleasant, as we all know, will not work because it will create a backup into the complex. The corner of Mount Pleasant and Holy Road is rated F by the state of Connecticut. Rating is not going to be lower for traffic issues. The developer wants to add more vehicles to an F-rated road. I'm wondering how emergency vehicles will access the complex, because kids that play soccer get hurt. Entries come with sports activities, EMS, and fire will need access. Proposed parking area and suggested entry and exit road is insufficient. I'm most concerned about the amount of asphalt required for proposed parking areas. Remembering the storm last August, and the vulnerable impact it had on nearby properties? Think about that. The delivery try of red, games will be played at night. There's supposed to be 12 games a day requiring lighting. Hope it's going to be dark sky compliant. And they reported in the POCD, you're required to take all of the consideration when rendering your decision. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much for coming and staying so late. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Chris Kenny, 6 Concord Bridge Road. We would have significantly more community support for the AC fields and program here tonight. However, Newtown's girls' high school soccer team and boys' soccer team had games this evening. The girls' team actually, I'd like to report that they won and actually secured first place in the SWC. It's amazing to see how far our high school soccer program has come. Both our boys' and girls' soccer programs are currently ranked among the top 10 in the state. One reason for their success is that many of our high school players also compete in travel programs such as AC, training year-round, representing Newtown at some of the highest levels in youth soccer. I'm especially proud to have a daughter who plays for AC. She has grown tremendously as both a player and a person competing alongside one of the best girls in the region. We currently need, we currently need to travel upwards of 30 minutes out of town for most AC practices. Bringing the AC program home to Newtown would have less than benefits for our entire community. It would promote healthy, positive activities for our kids who want to compete at the highest level of soccer. It increases Newtown's appeal for young families looking for a vibrant community with active, vibrant, active town with elite soccer programs. It also provides real economic impact with games bringing visitors, visiting teens, families, and business to our local restaurants and stores. AC isn't just a lower field for, lower Fearfield County travel program. It's an organization, as an organization, we've made trips as far north as Massachusetts and New Hampshire to play teams, and as far south as Maryland to compete. These outstanding teams will likely come to Newtown to compete. With the AC program competing in the Elite ECNL, one of the top leagues in the country, Newtown has a chance to truly be on the map for youth soccer excellence. Nearly 90% of girls who compete in college soccer actually come out of the ECNL. Let's continue to invest in our kids, our talent, and our future by developing these soccer fields for our young athletes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, if you could sign in.
We're going to, this is it, we have five people speak. I apologize to the additional people. We have other things to cover in the planning and zoning meeting, so we will continue it. Others will have the opportunity to speak. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
What's that?
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. It's submitted, actually.
I have five, I hold one. It's submitted.
All right, next thing.
New Hampshire to play teams, and as far south as Maryland to compete. These outstanding teams will likely come to Newtown to compete. With the AC program competing in the Elite ECNL, one of the top leagues in the country, Newtown has a chance to truly be on the map for youth soccer excellence. Nearly ninety percent of girls who compete in college soccer actually come out of the ECNL. Let's continue to invest in our kids, our town, and our future by developing these soccer fields for our young athletes. Thank you.
Yes, you can sign in. We're going to, this is it, we have five people speak. I apologize to the additional people, we have other things to cover in the Planning and Zoning meeting, so we will continue it, others will have the opportunity to speak. So, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. All those in favor? Thank you. It's submitted, actually. All right, next thing, the referral from Newtown Borough.
So, it's a draft resolution Newtown Borough, referral, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. It resolves with a text amendment, referral, for Borough zoning regulations four point zero eight point one, professional uses permitted by special exception. Four point zero eight point one, professional uses permitted by special exception. Add C, residential units within a professional building may exceed fifty percent of the gross floor area, provided that one. The residential area does not exceed seventy-five percent of the allowed gross floor of each professional building. Two, units shall be a minimum of eight hundred square feet. Three, two parking spaces shall be provided for each unit. Four, at least twenty-five percent of the allowed gross floor area shall remain allowed professional uses.
So, with these referrals, just a reminder to the commission that our job is to, from the borough, and from our perspective, does this conform with the plan of conservation and development? And so, it's not necessarily, it's not a formal approval, it's just a vote whether we feel that it does or it does not.
I was aligned with the borough for a lot of years, so these things have been discussed over and over by trying to define gross floor area, which I guess you didn't find it, but the POCD talks about having a professional zone. Right now, the borough's professional zone is about eight buildings, they're all, one larger building, but the uses keep getting expanded on residential uses, and I think it's getting close to extinguishing this professional zone, which was meant to be a buffer between commercial residences and private. My idea of residence is that it's consistent.
Saying, saying it's crossing over a professional.
My problem?
Sorry, I was saying that it's crossing over the professional, that presidential zone, he kind of eliminated the professional zone.
I mean, on the other hand, you know, in the POCD, you know, we have, we have this call for more residential units. And, you know, so there's another side to this as well, and, you know, we've had a lot of presentations tonight about the need in Connecticut for housing, so this is an opportunity there as well. So, that's just a thought. So, with that, you know, what I'd like to do is pose to the commission, maybe somebody can raise a motion to vote as to whether we feel this is consistent with the plan of conservation of it, and then we could move on.
I move that this resolution is found consistent with our plan of conservation. Oh. I move that this draft resolution, or this resolution is found consistent with our plan of conservation and development.
All those in favor? Aye. Sorry, Tom. Next, we have approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes, and there are numerous punctuation grammatical and issues like that with the minutes, but I believe that overall, someone that reads these adequately, fairly adequately reflects the meaning. Okay, but there are a couple of things that I think ought to be noted in our corrections. So therefore, I move that the minutes be approved with the following couple of corrections. That the eight-thirty G indicating like paragraph two on the first page, that ought to be eight dash thirty with lowercase g, so that it's recognized, not eight-thirty G. Okay, I saw that, all right. Okay, it should be paragraph eight dash thirty, lowercase g, in those couple of places. It's correct in here in two places. Then, on page five, on paragraph five and paragraph eight, it refers to Mr. Mandil, I think that ought to be Minus Mandil. And I think, you know, I think that ought to be noted. You want your name to be? You can air for a second.
All right, do we have a second? All right, we got Connie raised her hand first, so we have a second, so all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, say aye. All right, directors report. Make it long, please.
All right, first point, second paragraph, letter A. Just kidding. All right, two quick things for the commission. We passed out twenty-six Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dates. Just add something for you to think about. We ran into a couple times this year, questions about meeting dates and what holidays may fall on them, so we did an extensive search, we just put this together for you to look at it. So, over the next few months, as we get closer to adopting this, that you understand that there are some options with a few dates that have religious connotations, and then one cancellation possibly for January first. So, something to think about when you consider that, that's why we provided it. Secondly, is there any questions with that?
No, this is great, thank you.
Okay. The other thing is that we have two referrals from the borough, both have to do with industrial zones in the center of town, really doesn't affect our issues here in town, but I have those available if anybody wishes to look at them, and you're in the Town Works office also. That's it.
Okay, with that, I'd like to entertain the happy motion to adjourn. All those in favor? All those in favor of adjuring the meeting tonight, and almost tomorrow morning? Thank you. For those who stayed to the end, thank you.